Again, welcome everybody this evening. I am going to have to move a few items around on the agenda, but we will get to everything. So first thing I'd like to do is hand it over to Dr. Glass to recognize the American Legion Post 329.
Good evening, thank you. We are really excited tonight to have representatives from the American Legion Post 329 of Pearl River here with us tonight. They're here to recognize our staff, our faculty, our teachers, our students. And so I'd like to invite up to the podium Commander Danny Daven, who is here on behalf of other members of the American Legion Post 329. And so Commander, please come to the podium. We're delighted you're here tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Dr. Robert Glass for allowing us to be here tonight and the rest of the school district members. We're here, obviously as we said, the donations, the students, parents, and staff members of the school have contributed to veterans. In particular, Ms. Claire Delone-Champ, who championed the project. Present tonight is also her father, member of the Legion Post Charlie Reedy. I'd like to point out that our gifts, the gifts that you donated were given to Homes for Heroes, which is a best way of putting it for destitute veterans in Depan, New York. Its housing went to them. It went over to overseas soldiers and sailors, to various duty stations throughout the world. And we very much appreciate it, thank you very much. I'm gonna now turn it over to Tommy Lynch.
Hello, folks. Yeah, another thing to put on top of what Danny said is that the kids write letters that go inside each stocking or each bag. And when we give them to these veterans, that's their favorite part, to hear from the kids, the students. And you know, it's a great job that you're doing here to have these children recognize the service of their veterans, respect their flag and their country, and we really appreciate it. Dr. Glass and Ms. Delone-Champ, please come up to present the award to you, please, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
John H. Seacor, Post 329, Pearl River, New York. Matory Service Award presented to Eastchester Union Free School District, students, parents, staff, and community. With gratitude for your generous donations for the past 10 years of candy, holiday stockings, and heartfelt letters to our troops and veterans, both here and overseas, to let them know they are loved, appreciated, and owes in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paul, take a picture for us for the post. Picture for us for the post, please, Paul. He can't, he can't. A lot of those veterans have loved it.
You got wide ankle?
Yeah. Can someone take this?
Take a picture for us. Jackie, yeah. Try to get next to your daughter. She has to be somewhere else. You have to get next to your daughter, come on. Has to. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, guys. Please.
Gentlemen, I'm sorry, we have to board and the school district, thank you for all of your work.
Okay, always a good thing to do. Okay, next on the agenda is, I am gonna ask for, well, actually, why don't we do the superintendent's report next? Student reps, I'm sorry, student reps.
Good evening, everyone. Jazzco started selling tickets for their 38th Annual Weekend of Dance on Friday, February 11th at 7:00, Saturday, February 12th at 7:00, and Sunday, February 13th at 1:00. Come see numerous styles of dance performed by the Jazzco dancers. Everything from hip-hop to belly dancing to Latin. Tickets will be sold at eastchester/booktix.com. Get your tickets before they sell out. EGO's Winter Blood Drive is back. The drive will take place on February 2nd in the high school cafeteria from 2:30 to 7:30. To sign up, you must be 16 or older. Make sure to come by and help save a life, as Red Cross is experiencing a shortage of blood and is in need of any help they can get. An appointment can be scheduled through the high school's website. EGO is also starting to prepare for Spirit Week in mid-February to get students excited for the spring sports that will be starting towards the beginning of March. The Rowe Kappa Club gave a presentation on ancient civilizations to the students at Anne Hutch in Greenville. The students learned about the Mayans, Incas, and Aztecs. The informational presentation taught the students about what ancient civilizations contribute to society and piqued their interest in ancient history.
Habitat for Humanity is currently hosting a fundraiser until February 1st. Students in all grades are selling chocolate boxes to raise money. The proceeds from this fundraiser will go to help local communities that were hit hard by Hurricane Ida. Recent good news for the club is that Relay for Life is currently scheduled for May 21st at Lake Isle. As of right now, it is not definite that it will be an overnight event, but everyone is very excited, as this is something students, teachers, and the community look forward to every year. Going Green Club members last week signed up and took part in the NASA Globe Tree and Cloud Challenge. This began last summer and allows citizens to look at cloud photographs and analyze observations such as cloud coverage, dust storms, fog, or any other noteworthy viewings. This is done through an app called Globe Observer, where students, teachers, or the general public can take pictures and submit their personal observations right through their phone. Club members of Going Green got started with this challenge last week and will continue to participate for the remainder of it. The National Honor Society induction took place last week. The ceremony was held as new members were inducted into Eastchester's chapter. This was very exciting for students, as last year's ceremony was virtual and not able to have in person. Also, the inductees have started tutoring anyone in need of help in any subject every Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. That is all for this evening, and as always, feel free to ask any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for our students? No? Okay. You're welcome to stay, and you're welcome to go home and do your homework. Okay, next on the agenda would be the, I'm sorry, superintendent's report?
Board committee reports?
Okay, we could do board committee reports first. Okay, any board committee reports? Finance committee? Who's the chairperson? Chris?
I'm the chairperson.
Yeah, well, you mentioned we had a meeting, that's all.
Yes, we just had a committee, finance committee meeting just a little while ago, and the preliminary draft is looking good. It's in line with prior years, which is great. And meetings have just started with school administrators, are underway to determine needs by each school building. So we'll be communicating more as we hear more of the details around the needs there. Anything else you want to share? Judith?
Judith, go ahead. I don't think, I mean, I think you covered it perfectly. I think we're on track and we're starting the process, so we'll hear more in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, facilities committee. Who's chairperson on that?
I'm the chairperson.
You're the chairperson on that. Yeah, well, why don't we talk about the bond for a second? We have a vote coming up, right?
We have, we have a bond coming up. We're proposing a bond. It's a multi-year bond. Some of you have heard reports from, thank you to Lisa and to Mimasi and our architects and to our Aris, our general contractor, talk about the need to keep these buildings afloat. You know, we are, we are approaching a time where we really need to give some attention to the buildings structurally, and there's some pages on the website that can give you all the details. It's a, perhaps a large-looking bond, but when you consider the fact that it's actually spread out over, you know, about a five-year period, you know, it's, it's stuff that needs to get done. You know, we want to keep, we want to keep our heat working. We don't want to have to shut down because of heat issues. We don't want to have to shut down because of asbestos falling from the ceiling or tiles failing in the schools, and, you know, we gotta get on this. So I hope everyone will take a look at this and reach out if there are any questions, and, I don't know, anything I missed? Anybody want to add anything? And make sure you vote.
And also...
February 15th. February 15th.
Just, I encourage you, if you have questions you want to see for yourself, please sign up for a tour. You get to see it all for yourself.
Also, there'll be a newsletter coming in home at the end of this week with FAQs and a detailed scope of the work, so if you want to look out in the mail for that, that's on its way. And everything else is on the, on the website, kind of packaged for you, if you need any more information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other bond, any other board committee reports? Okay, no? Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Yeah, we have two or three items here. The first one, of course, is the, is the bulk of the report this afternoon, this evening, and I can't tell you how, how long I've waited for this moment to be able to talk about our strategic plan. From the moment that I interviewed with the board and was hired, we talked about the need to put in place a strategic plan in the district. And of course, we've had a number of events related to the pandemic that have made that an inopportune time to have those deep conversations. But as soon as we got past the worst of the pandemic, we were able to engage in the strategic planning process. And here tonight to share that in a little more detail with us is our strategic coherence planning facilitator, Jonathan Costa, from Ed Advance, who's done great work with our community, and he's going to describe that work to you tonight in a high-level overview, and he'll be here to answer any of your questions. And we have a number of members from our cross-sectional committee who are here tonight to show support, and we'll recognize them a little bit more toward the end. But Jonathan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I am standing, by the way, just so you know. Podiums are not my friend, but it's okay, I'll get through. So it's, it's kind of hard to believe, but we, I was here at a board meeting in the before times. November 5th, 2019 is when we talked about this process, and I implored the board at the time, described what approach I take to this work, and the whole summary of it is really to focus on the things that the community believes students need most critically to acquire in their time at school to be successful in life learning and work beyond school. And it's a different approach to planning, and the board, and Scott, and Dr. Glass liked what they heard, and we committed to it. And of course, we delayed the start for a year, but once we did get going, the people on that screen right now gave up about 75 hours of their lives during the height of the pandemic, essentially, to meet and to work together, both virtually and in person, to create the, the outcome of the, of the plan that I'll, that we'll share with you tonight. And I really want to thank all of them, because the last two years, I don't need to tell anyone in this room, have been challenging for people in schools. And to do that work and this work at the same time, I've never had to ask anyone to lift that kind of burden, and I give everyone on that screen my utmost respect and thanks, because they made all of this happen. Some of you are around the table, and some of you are in the audience, and I thank you for all those efforts on behalf of the students of Eastchester. You have two ways to access the planning results of the report. I'm sure Dr. Glass, if he hasn't shared these with you already, he will. We have a whole story version, which runs a little over 40 pages, and that tells you essentially where all of what we did and why we did it and how we did it, literally step by step. Or you can get the one-page Reader's Digest Elevator Pitch version, which essentially puts all of the outcomes of the plan with a summary of the purpose and the process just on one page. You can see it all in one place. If you are a real glutton for punishment, there are six online folders that captured all of the work behind the plan, and those are all available and publicly viewable as well. As I said, the whole purpose of the planning process is to ensure or dedicate our work to prepare every student in Eastchester for life learning and work beyond school, and then to focus how the systems of work in the school, curriculum, instruction, assessment, resource deployment, community engagement, board policy, all align with actually making that happen. Eastchester had graduation goals for students when we started, and the first thing we really did was do a stress test on those graduation goals to make sure they were aligned with what the committee believed kids really were going to need for life learning and work beyond school in 2034, not 1994 or 2004, when those were first created. And you'll see evidence of some of those graduation goals in the next generation of them, but we really worked hard over the first summer, doing research and collaborative planning on what we thought students would need to be successful going forward. That is the process we used. The first phase there is committing to those principles of coherence, defining the vision of the graduate, defining a definition of deep learning, and then doing a data scan across the district of alignment of systems with those goals, analyzing the results to determine the gap between what we want to have happen and what was happening, and sorting through all of those to set focus for the work going forward, and then to plan actions for how to close those gaps in the years to come. The first outcome was a refined vision of the graduate for Eastchester. The vision, the mission of the district is the same. It was fine. It was, you know, a good summary placeholder for what public schools are charged to do in the state of New York. But what kids need in order to fulfill that mission was the first question the committee answered. And we had a retreat at the end of 2021, where we shared a couple of dozen different research resources. We had some time over the summer to reflect and contemplate, and came back at the end of August in over two days, using a series of discussion, weighted voting, interactions among the entire team, came up with the four skills that you see in the left-hand column, and the five skills you see in the left-hand column, and the five dispositions you see in the right-hand column. And that screen right there is essentially where the rest of the foundation of this plan lies. Because the degree to which every Eastchester student leaves your community with those skills and dispositions will ultimately be the measure of success for this plan. The second foundational piece of work was if you believe as a community, and by the way, we also surveyed through a tool called Thought Exchange, the entire Eastchester community, we got about 900 responses that gave us feedback on that vision of the graduate. If we really believe that those things are most critical, then what are the conditions for learning under which they are most likely to develop? And that led to this definition of deep learning. And what you see there are characteristics of a learning environment that are most likely to develop in students, the environment where they can practice and achieve and get better at those critical life skills over time. And so what do we want students to do? What kind of environment do we want them to learn in? That was the foundational start. And then we essentially looked high and low through the system, through the school system, around if that's what we want, then what are we doing already, and what will we need to do to close the gap between those first two items? And that was done through the lens of these seven critical systems that drive performance in every public school. The center gear, that leadership gear, is the degree to which central office, the administrative team, the superintendent, and the board are working together to focus on the things that matter most for kids. And what are those? The things in the red gear, those goals for learning. And that is the vision of the graduate that I just showed you. Instructional practices, the purple gear on the left, those instructional environments, and the sort of light green gear at the top right, how, how will we know? So it's one thing to say, we want kids to be good problem solvers, we want them to be critical thinkers, we want them to be good communicators. How do we define those things? And how do we give students feedback on them so they know how they're doing and not wait till they get to high school to start giving it to them? How do they know K through 12? Use the same language when you talk about that in every school, so when kids leave, they know what they're supposed to do, how to do it, and they've exercised those skills and developed them over time. And those yellow gears at the bottom, those support systems of the community, the policy and regulation, and the resource deployment. So how do we get to these things in those seven systems? So we broke into six teams. Each team had a focus, and you see them up there, aligned with those systems. There were questions they had to answer, there was evidence they had to gather, and they rated the systems for their alignment with that vision of the graduate and that definition of deep learning. And it was the results of that data scan, which took about 12 weeks, from September through the middle of November of 2021, to determine what was aligned and what wasn't. And when it was aligned, we celebrated it and patted ourselves on the back. There's a really important positive learning culture in the district, focused on data, focused on improvement. The gaps were really around how we define and learn about what those skills are and what they look like consistently when kids do them over time. So this was a, this wasn't a scrap everything exercise. It was, let's determine what we're doing, what's working, and what we need to start doing to ensure that we have that long-term alignment with the vision of the graduate and the definition of deep learning. We did identify very strong areas of consistent practice in the district that we celebrated and will build on. There's a strong system in place for the development and evolution of curriculum. There is a culture of data-driven decision-making. We felt that stakeholders were involved and were supportive of the district. There was clearly a commitment and a vision for the use of technology, your ability to adjust in the pandemic to a period of remote learning. You have the tools you need, and you are committed to making sure that all means all, that you support achievement for all students. And those were really important foundational areas of strength that we uncovered in the data scan. In the areas of the gaps between what we want and what exists, there were three major areas of focus that the team uncovered. And it was really further defining and laying out what that vision of the graduate looks like on a K-12 level, to be sure that is consistently communicated across the district, and to increase parent understanding and participation in what that looks like for their students, and also to work with teachers to understand where that definition of deep learning comes from and how it can be better applied in classrooms. The bigger, another area of challenge was the measurement and assessment of the vision of the graduate. Even though you had those goals, those graduation goals, there was no systemic data collection on them, so there's no way to tell a graduating senior whether they've achieved the vision of the graduate or not, or for you to hold yourselves accountable to that. So that will need to be a major focus, just balancing the assessment system so it is aligned not only with traditional measures of district achievement, but giving kids reliable feedback on their development and progress in acquiring that vision of the graduate. And lastly, to make sure all of the different systems in the district are aligned and connected to those critical goals. So when curriculum maps are revised, that the vision of the graduate and those critical skills are included, that resource deployment focuses on the building of capacity for those things, and that the vision of the graduate drives goal-setting and professional learning in the district. So these were the gaps that were identified, and then the team converted those gaps into positive, forward-leaning work strategies. So the district will collaboratively define, refine, and communicate the revised vision of the graduate, the definition of deep learning, to enable a community-wide understanding of student success. And over time, if we are successful, those indicators of success that you see under that strategy will be realized. Strategy two, the district will continue to develop systems to recognize, observe, assess, and provide meaningful performance feedback to support every student in meeting the vision of the graduate. Students should know how they're doing and what they need to do better to acquire those critical skills, and reflect the dispositions that we know they also need to be successful. And finally, strategy three, the major instructional systems that support the acquisition of the vision of the graduate will be purposely aligned and focused on the equitable achievement of those goals for learning for all students in Eastchester. And again, those indicators of success are the main focus of the work going forward. The work to be done, we know what the gaps are and what progress will look like. They've also identified how those changes might impact other systems in the district. They have made initial plans in each of those three strategies in terms of the major chunks of work that need to be done for progress to be made. And Central Office is now planning and sequencing and resourcing how those actions will take place going forward. The challenge here is that there is nothing in that plan that is easy to do. The whole point of the process from the beginning was to only zero in on those major levers that were of the most importance, and because of that, you're talking about beliefs about instruction, beliefs about what matters, beliefs about how we organize learning, about how we give kids feedback for learning, how we engage them in rigorous learning experiences over time. And that will take time. And it's expected that all of that work being organized and tried, you go through it, you reflect, you adjust, you recalibrate, you replan, and you move on. Very much the same learning cycle we expect kids to go through as they develop their skills in the, in the vision of the graduate. All of those chunks of work are laid out in the plan, and I urge you to go through it, and if you have questions about it, obviously, Rob and Scott and anyone else who participated can help you. I can talk a little bit more about it right now if you'd like, but I just want to leave you with this. From a board standpoint, as a six-year board survivor myself, I know you may be wondering what is your role in this. I think the most important thing a board can do is stay engaged and become familiar with the tools that came out of the data scan process to track and plan progress, and there are two of them. So if you go in the plan itself, you'll see each of those data scan groups did the scoring and created an alignment heat map, which is a score from zero to four, about where a district that is working coherently to achieve their vision of the graduate is. And there is a current state map for Eastchester for each of those five areas. And over time, as you do the work, you will see those measures improve. So that's one place. So if you go in the plan itself, you'll see each of those data scan groups did the scoring and created an alignment heat map, which is a score from zero to four about where a district that is working coherently to achieve their vision of the graduate is. And there is a current state map for East Chester for each of those five areas. And over time, as you do the work, you will see those measures improve. So that's one place that you can look for for progress. Also, for each of the three strategies, there is a gap closing configuration map. Literally, it's a change rubric where you can see what progress will look like as the actions that are planned to be taken are implemented. And you can ask questions of Rob and Scott and the administrative team and folks who are on the planning team. Where are we? How is that going? Have we made progress? It's easy because right now, everything is in the current state column. And you want to go to the desired state column so you can track how things are going on progress of the plan in those two places. And the first examples are listed there on that slide as to where to find it in the plan itself. The most important thing, I think, for a board to do is to make the vision of the graduate and the definition of deep learning your focus and your mission. I understand how, especially in the last two years, it seems like everything is sort of maliciously designed to distract you from the reason for why public schools exist. And you spend a lot of time talking about things that are important but not central to the vision of why you're here. And if you could make it a point at every meeting to talk about something that a student did that was aligned with your vision of the graduate, and talk about how you're making progress about creating learning environments that support every kid's ability to achieve it, you'll be doing an important contribution to helping this work succeed. Try to stay on task. And this is a cliche, but it requires you to take the long view. And the main thing is to make sure the main thing remains the main thing. Stay focused on it, keep working at it, and you'll do good work as a result of it. So that's sort of the 10,000-foot view, and I am more than happy to answer questions about anything that you just saw or things that you didn't see that you wished you would.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions? Any board members have any questions on the presentation or anything? All right. You were on the committee. Want to say something?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. First of all, good to see you. Thank you for coming. And thank you to all the other members of the committee that came out tonight. I enjoyed spending the time with you over the past few months going through this. You know, one of the things that I think is important that as board members and as a community we recognize is that, you know, every day we're thinking about, you know, what is our work product going to look like? What are our students going to look like when they graduate? And that's, you know, that's something, you know, we didn't have to change the vision. As a board member, we've worked on the mission and the vision. We didn't have to change it that much. But the thing here that I thought was the most novel, unique aspect, as a person who's been on the board for, I forget, if it's seven and a half of the last eight years or whatever. The goal here is to identify ways to systemically monitor and improve and achieve those goals. And I think that is the real key. You know, we've talked about making kids who, you know, producing kids who graduate and know how to solve complex problems, or know how to be critical thinkers, or have empathy, or are good citizens. That's still here. But we never really, you know, for years, we always talked about, well, how do we define that? Is it the scorecard that we get from the state? Is it the number of schools or the names of the schools that the kids graduate to go to? And it doesn't allow you to connect, you know, does having a STEM lab in Ann Hutch or Greenville, you know, how does that impact? How does that get us there? You know, does having a change to a curriculum, does having a change to a program, how does that get us there? And this gives us some framework, and it really is, I think, an outstanding framework, to systemically track, monitor, and understand at every level how we're going to achieve that. We're not there yet, as John eloquently, you know, pointed out, right? We're just touching the edge. We haven't even figured out how to communicate the vision so that we're talking about it yet. And that's really the first gap that we're looking to close, is to get it so that every time we make a decision, we're saying, well, how's this going to affect, you know, a kid in kindergarten now when he graduates from school in 13 years? And we need to get into that mode and talk about those things because otherwise, we're just going to flounder around all these day-to-day issues, these fires that we have to, you know, put out. Obviously, in the last couple of years, we've had more fires than I can recall in a long time. But, you know, we can't be the firefighters. We have staff to be the firefighters, and we have to keep that vision of the target there. And so that, to me, was really, you know, exciting and outstanding, and I appreciate, you know, Jonathan, you coming out and helping us with that and the framework you helped us to start that path. It's an ongoing process that will go on, you know, probably, hopefully, you know, eternally after we're all moved on or whatever, to whatever we do next, the next board comes in and so forth, and our grandkids graduate from East Chester or whatnot. So I thank you, and I thank again all the members who are on the committee and also the members of the board who are on the committee. I just think it was an outstanding program, and I appreciate it. And I thank Dr. Glass for, you know, bringing it to our attention as part of what we brought him on board when we hired him to talk about because it could have been very easily overlooked during the last couple of years as something that, you know, we couldn't even give attention to. So that's my comment. No questions, just comments.
Okay. Steve?
I wanted to say thank you to you and to the entire team that worked on this. I agree with Judah. I think this is an amazing framework. I think that's, you know, I don't want to say it's easy to create a vision, but I feel like that's the easy part. And the framework that you've given us will help us to do the hard part, the measuring, the truly understanding where we are. It's not always easy to understand where you are, and it's not always the best news. And I love that we found gaps to work on, and we know where to focus first. And I'm looking forward to future presentations where we will find out more details of how we are going to live this vision.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody? Cheryl?
Go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, so these become our pillars of excellence, right, within the district, that every school, each school will adapt this framework and as we kind of grow, student grows through the district. There should be a consistency from school to school and should be, it's a living framework, right, that continues to evolve.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Cheryl?
I just also wanted to thank you so much, Jonathan, for your leadership on this. I thought it was a really streamlined and instructive process, really a lot of deep reflection, and I got to know the members on the team in really new ways. And so it was really exciting to bring families, community members, staff, teachers, administrators, board members together. I would, you know, I think that for me, the key, it's true what Dr. Glass said, you know, from the moment, I think, when we were writing the job description for the superintendent position, we had something about strategic planning in there. It was really important to us, and it was delayed, but worth the wait. For me, I think, to kind of echo what you said, Kristi, this provides a framework for transparency and accountability, right? We are transparent about what we're working on, we're accountable to these things, and there'll be a clear connection between budget asks, how budgets develop over time, and the goals that we have. And I would just also, for people who want to get into the weeds and read the longer drafts, after each of the key areas, you know, instruction, assessment, leadership, the different teams working on those areas identified key gaps, and they go into some detail. And some of that information came out of surveys, and I think that they're useful for us all to look at and think about, what did our collective teams together come up with as key gaps, things that are missing that aren't quite there. I think you'll see things you recognize, and they are reminding us, you know, in quite good detail what we want to work on. So thank you for this process and for getting us through this. Now we have the work ahead of us. Can I just ask a quick question? Typically, how long is this strategic plan, strategic coherence plan, live in a district? Is this a three-year plan, a five-year plan? Is there a timeframe that generally you can attach to a plan like this?
It depends on the leadership and the commitment and how much progress you make. So I did a keynote speech at the beginning this year for a district that I did this process with 13 years ago and have been back periodically over 13 years with the same superintendent. In Chappaqua, it's been six years, five or six years. I have had other districts where I've done four plans every five years, one every five years. So it just depends. The biggest issue is, as I said earlier, and Judah mentioned this, none of the tasks are easy. This was not a technical change plan. This is an adaptive change plan. This is about how we think about doing our work. So it takes time. It takes time in an era where there is very little of it to be had. So that, it brings to the surface all the more importance on focus and alignment. Because as you know from hearing me go on and on during the planning process, all these decisions were, which of these things will make the biggest difference? Which of these things will make the biggest impact? Because you don't have enough time or resources to work on things that won't matter. You've got to pick the big things. So everything in this plan is a big thing, and I would recommend you pick one of those big things to work on first. Get your feet under you, get the momentum going, build that awareness and coherence, and then go deeper as you go. And just keep checking back in, you know, every six months, every year. Where are we? How far are we? What do we need to do to get better? In my previous planning life, you know, we did five years' worth of projections on goals and activities. As you know, anything can happen at any time. So we plan six to 12 months out, we do our best, we stop, we look back, we say, how are we doing? What do we need to change? What do we need to adapt? That doesn't change, and that's the key, right? The goal is what you see on that screen. That doesn't change. I can't see a decade from now, anyone coming around and say, boy, can you believe we thought solving complex problems was important? That went out of style years ago. That is going to be there staring you in the face forever. And that thing shouldn't change. How we adapt to the environment, to resources, to get every kid to be able to do those things well, that's what changes.
So just a follow-up question, since a lot of the progress mapping is tied to, you know, making sure resources are part of that alignment, I wonder if, and since Kristi mentioned, based on the meeting of the finance committee, we're already meeting with building principals. So I would like to know if the building principals, I think there are some in the room, the administrators, is this framework, is this strategic plan already informing how you're framing your wants and needs at the building level and at the district level? Are we going to see this in the budget?
I do think you will. I mean, I, you know, setting in on the budget meetings, and, you know, I think you're going to start to see the seeds of that.
Already taking shape. Okay. And you remember, even in our sessions leading up to this, you know, people after a few months of getting involved in it, you sort of saw where it was going, right? And it happens all the time where the plan isn't finished yet, but you read between the lines and thinking, boy, you know what? What about our professional learning calendar? How is that going to help us with that definition of deep learning? And even if it's not explicit in the plan, you see it implicitly in discussions and in just the thinking that goes into framing where we're going to go. And now that it's more or less complete and you've got those big chunks of work laid out, I think it will just pick up momentum and get more systemic as you go.
Anybody else?
Okay. I'll give my comments.
Sure.
I think the work is fantastic. You did a great job on it, the committee, everybody involved. But I think this is really like just the beginning. This is like, you know, you just put your kid into Waverly.
Yeah.
Okay? And this is, or in the bond process, this is the design phase. We just did the design. Now it's up to us to build a building.
Yeah.
And what we have to do as a board is we got to provide the resources and the direction and the support to the administration to make this happen. And we've got to hold our feet to the fire. We've got to, you know, maybe we set up a quarterly report at the board meetings on this, where do we stand on implementing the strategic plan? We've got to get the administration, the staff, parents, okay? Parents, this has to be communicated to parents because this doesn't, the district doesn't do this by itself and in a bubble. You got to have buy-in from the parents and the community as well. So we've got to communicate that. This should be a piece of our, every communication that we send out, okay? Because, you know, for years, I've always said, you know, when people would sit here and argue about, you know, whether there should be 19 kids in a classroom or 21 kids in a classroom. And my comment was always, come to a graduation and look at the finished product because that's what we put out of this district. That is our product. We don't manufacture, okay? But we do produce a product, and that product goes out to the world. And this is very focused on what that product needs as far as tools and what we want it to look like. And so we've got to, you know, keep that focus on the finished product. And as Judah said, you know, there's going to be a lot of speed bumps along the way, and we're going to have to deal with them, and we're going to have to talk about them. But this should be our primary focus. So, you know, going forward, I hope that we can make that happen. Anybody else before we change subjects?
I'm just going to add that, I think what will be important too, I love the part about where the students, you know, through this framework, they'll be demonstrating or will be highlighting, you know, how students are demonstrating these pillars. I'm calling them of excellence. And I think that's what, that's the fun part, is to see how that actually unfolds in our kids across the district.
Absolutely. Because each kid will demonstrate some of those things in different ways. So there are pathways to really allow all students to thrive and be successful because there are things embedded in that vision of the graduate that can be deeply personalized by students. Because oftentimes, we ask students to do things a certain way and express learning in a certain way, and there are elements of some of those things will allow them to really shine through things that are meaningful to them as they demonstrate their acquisition of those skills over time.
The uniqueness about, there are unique differences.
Exactly. Yep.
I did want to take a moment and thank the board because your support made this possible right from the beginning. The meeting that Jonathan referenced when he first came and talked about this process, you know, I think that this process found acceptance. I appreciate you accepting my recommendation to move forward with this and putting, you know, the resources necessary to get it done. Had you not supported it, we wouldn't have this beginning that we have today. And I also want to take a moment to thank all the members of the committee, all whose names were here, but many of them are here tonight. And if you were a part of the strategic coherence planning team, would you just stand tonight so that we can thank you and recognize you for that 75 hours plus that you all put in to make this happen? Thank you very much. And much as with the, is what occurred with our DEI task force, and it's been mentioned tonight that there were relationships built, there were opportunities to see people engage in really deep conversations and see people in new ways. And Jonathan, thank you for facilitating that and making that possible. My eyes were opened. I'd been through a few of these in my My eyes were opened, I'd been through a few of these in my time, but my eyes were open to some really great new ways of thinking about this work that I had not been privy to before. And I want to thank you for bringing that to us because it's important that this kind of work stays fresh and renews and isn't just the same old, same old, you know? You really made that possible. So our pledge to you as an administration and as a staff, and I know I can count on the community as well, our pledge to you is that we will begin to work this plan and we will begin to move it forward and we will give you updates. And if we get stuck, we're not going to hesitate to ask for help. Jonathan has committed to, you know, being there if we need some support. We'll never be in this alone. We're in this together. And what's really exciting is I feel that truly this was authored, you know, by a great cross-section that represents the community. And I hear and see the community's voice in this plan. It's not one person's plan. It's not Jonathan's plan or my plan. This is our community's plan as much as it could ever be determined. So I want to thank everybody for that. And Jonathan, once again, thank you for presenting tonight. If you have any other questions before Jonathan.
And Judah, as a layperson, to hear your summary when you spoke, it's like, my work here is done. Because you absolutely got it. And it was, it's, I appreciate the fact that you were so engaged and Cheryl as well, you know, I've enjoyed my work here and whatever you need from me to help this continue, I'd be glad to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, but I'd like to ask if anyone from the public would like to speak on the consent agenda items only. We do have an item on the agenda to discuss about masks. And I ask if you have anything to say about that. You'll be given a second opportunity after we're done with the business, which if all things go well, should be about five minutes from now. So anybody want to speak on the consent agenda?
Hi, my name is Kathy Belli, 31 Hickory Hill Road. Recently, we honored Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., where I came across a quote that resonated with me. Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. This quote could not be any more relevant today as we continue to advocate for our children. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Glass for acting on the recent New York State Supreme Court decision blocking--
Excuse me. We're going to do that piece after the business part of the meeting. So if you want to come up again and do this, that'd be fine.
Okay.
That's not really the part of the agenda we're dealing with right now.
Okay.
Okay? You can come up again and you can be first, okay? So anybody else on the agenda, on the business items? Okay, fine. So Steve, would you like to review and move the consent agenda?
Sure. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, which includes the following: minutes, personnel agenda, committee on preschool, special education, special education recommendations, business offer, business office recommendations, and other business items.
Okay. You want to add on to that, accepting the Treasuries Report and those things?
Yes, and--
That's the business office.
That's, yeah, that's under business office recommendation.
Okay, all right, then, fine. All right. Chrissy, you want to second that? Sure. Anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? Yes, no? No, okay. All in favor? Done. Okay, you want to move the other business items as well? Office recommendations?
Well, that--
We did that.
Oh, it's actually not listed there. Correct. It's listed 11 twice and it should have been 12 other business items.
Right. That's why, all right. Who wants to move 11? Jonah, you want to move item 11, item 11, 1, 2, and 3?
We moved that, yeah, we did that.
There's a typo on the agenda. 11 appears twice. Business office recommendations is 11, 1, 2, and 3.
Okay.
And then other business items is listed as 11.
But it's 12, yeah. But I moved other business items as well, so--
That's moving.
So we did those?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So now we're up to other business items, which is the policies.
We just moved it, yeah.
Other business items is if you look at the language in the consent agenda, it's listed as other business items, but it's--
We have to fix this because we can't do this like this anymore. Okay?
Your time is up.
Yeah, I had like six things I want to talk about on the, on the policies.
You want to separate out the policies?
Yeah, I want to separate out the policies because I want to talk about them separately. Okay, so let's revote on that. Let's revote on everything except the policies, so.
So we're moving--
We're taking those out of the consent agenda.
Everything except for other business--
Excuse me, everybody, this is a little administrative glitch. Okay? So let's revote on this, everything except the policy readings. Okay? All in favor? Okay, good, everybody. Now let's talk about the policies individually. All right. Policy 1201, does anybody have any issues with that? Okay, good. Then we'll, Steve, you will move that one as well. Policy number--
I don't, you said, oh, 1201, okay, policy 1230, okay.
Right.
I remember 1201, policy 1230.
Right. So the reading of policy 1202, which is 1230R. Now, I had an issue with that one and I just want to bring this up and see if anybody else has the same issue. On page one of that policy, in time limits, the last sentence reads, "If there's a dispute about time limits, about time limits may be extended or limited by a majority vote of the board, provided any extension or limit is applied equitably to all speakers and no time is under three minutes." I think it should say equitably to all speakers and not reference any time limit. Because if you have 25, 30, 40 people who want to speak, and the board should have the opportunity to limit the time per person. And if it's in the policy, you would have to change the policy. I don't think, I don't think that's a good thing to keep in hand. Does anybody agree? Yes, no? Discussion?
That makes sense.
Yeah, it's, if there's a change made by the board at a meeting, which we can do in our policy, we could extend the 30 minutes, we could expend the amount of time that people could speak. But this policy says you can't shorten it below three minutes. And I think if, if the marketplace dictates that we have to shorten it, that would be a board decision for that evening to shorten it. So I think that policy should end with, provided any extension or limit is applied equitably to all speakers. Follow?
So that gives us flexibility.
Gives you flexibility. It's not as rigid.
Extend or--
Yeah, so theoretically, we can say every speaker can only speak for one minute.
Well, if there's 50 people who want to speak, you could do that or you could ask people to speak in groups, which has been done in the past as well. You know, if four people want to come up and talk about the same item, they share the three minutes, things like that. It gives you more flexibility. And it's not going to be enforced only unless--
Extenuating--
Yeah, extenuating circumstances. So I don't see it as a downside.
The language actually does say the time limits can be extended or limited. So in theory--
Yeah, but--
It's sort of self-contradictory. No, no, I'm agreeing with you. I have no objection to removing the three-minute--
That last line changes--
Minimum, right.
Yeah, or limited. It negates or limited.
But it requires the majority vote of the board to do that.
Well, I think the or limited also includes not just the individual time limit, but the--
Right, the overall.
The overall 30 minutes.
It's flexibility. So I have no objection to-- Everybody okay with taking off those last six words?
Extend the 30 minutes, correct?
Yeah.
Decide to extend more than 30 minutes because we really, yeah.
Which I think is good.
Yeah. And that's always been our policy, so we're not changing that. Everybody okay with amending it like that?
Sure.
All in favor? On that one? Good.
Do we need to, as a point of procedure, do we need to move, do we do a first reading and second reading if we're changing it?
We're going to accept the edit on that one. Okay? And that's a second reading.
Right, but do we need to, does it need to be a first reading if we've amended it?
That, I don't know.
I don't know.
Please say. Do we have to first, does that become the first reading again?
We have to have a third reading.
What I would recommend is that you pull whichever ones you still want to debate and put it back into the committee and not do that here at the table because it's going to get confused. So whichever ones that you still want to discuss, I would pull from the agenda just to prove the ones that you have no issue with and go back to--
Good, that's a very good suggestion. Does anyone have any of the policies that they want to put off the table for now? So we're removing 1230R, correct? Which is 1202. I've got to change on policy 2342.
That one's a first reading.
Okay. 1530 is a first reading and 8130 is also a first reading. So we could talk about those. And which 6700, that's a first reading as well. Okay, so we're talking about those. Let's do the first readings in order. First reading on policy 2342. Anybody have any issues with that? Yes?
Where it says that the agenda supporting materials are distributed to the board four days in advance, I'd add a proviso that kind of supplemental additional items or edits can be made kind of thereafter so long as the proviso is as soon as practicable or something like that.
I'm okay with that. I didn't catch it.
Yes, no?
I mean, I thought that we actually were going in that direction because earlier in the year, I don't know if it was Kristi who said, you know, we need the weekend to read all the materials because sometimes we would get materials on Monday. And I think it's a good suggestion because if we get, it depends on, you know, the extent of an edit, but I think that is a pretty broad and flexible category. I think it's very useful because we talk about and have to read a lot of material and we make important decisions to be able to have access to the materials. Sometimes we have pages and pages of it over the weekend. It gives us time to adequately prepare and have a discussion. So I think that the four days, I thought that was a new addition and it makes a lot of, a lot of sense. It helps me, I think all of us as board members, prepare adequately for a discussion.
I think what Jonah, and correct me if I'm misreading your comment, is asking that under some circumstances, it's good for the, normally, but sometimes you might not, you know, have the four days to include it. And there has to be an exception where you could add something and then notify people that it's on the agenda. You don't, am I--
Yeah, I would always want the bulk of the agenda to be presented four days in advance, but it just, I wouldn't want to limit if we have to make a little change here or there if something comes up.
Well, we don't, right? We had edits even, you know, yesterday, right? So--
Yeah, well, yeah, we had that happen yesterday.
We had edits yesterday that, you know, other, I mean, we had--
Extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, we had changes to the personnel policy that came in. It happens.
So then let's change the policy to match what we're doing.
Well, maybe we could include extenuating circumstances in there as something to that effect.
So I understand that there can be some emergency situations or something that is urgent that we need to vote on, right, that at the next meeting or else there's some sort of problem. But short of that, I don't think we should have materials the day before the meeting. I think, I think we owe it to the board members and we owe it to the public to have the time to read through everything and to think about these things so we can come to meetings informed and make good, informed decisions, right? So short of emergency situations where something is, must be voted on at the next meeting, that we should have four days.
I would be fine putting something time-sensitive or something like that in there.
Sense of urgency. Is that, I mean, there are extenuating circumstances. It could be, we need to be agile. We need to be able to respond accordingly within timeframes if in the event of an emergency of some--
And we don't want to violate our own written policy.
Correct, yes.
So we need that kind of--
Well, but I just, time-sensitive. So if we're, we have to approve a trip that needs, you know, needs to be voted on at that meeting, that's a time-sensitive thing. But if something is not tied to a date that needs approval or the cheerleaders can't go to Florida, then, you know, I don't think it would fall under, under the realm of it should be, it should be able to be slipped in.
Yeah, I think that's what we're all talking about. I don't think--
I think it's just more the wording of like emergency versus time-sensitive.
You could say both.
You could say time-sensitive, extenuating circumstances.
So I would suggest that the language should say that it is time-sensitive, which should specify not just time-sensitive, which can be interpreted in different ways, but it should say something to, something that must be voted on at that next meeting.
I'm sure the administration could get somebody to fix the wording for us.
Well, the policy committee should be able to do it, right? The policy--
We can bring it back to the policy committee.
We'll take this off, we'll send it back to the policy committee. You now, you know, you now have our understanding of how we'd like to, right, improve that and let's do that.
I have another question on this one in addition to Jonah's and it's the sentence that begins, it's released, it says, it talks about, is released, is discussed at the board meetings, permissible to be released to the public, will be posted on the district's website to the extent practicable 24 hours before the meeting. Then the next sentence I have an issue with, it says, "In addition, the agenda will be made available to the news media, including local news media and radio stations." And I question the wording. What does that mean? Does that mean we have to send out our agenda to news media, newspapers, and radio stations? I don't think that's what we intend here. And I'm going to suggest that we change that sentence to read something to the effect of, "And as such, the agenda is therefore available to the news media." Put the burden on them to look at our website to get the agenda and not have language that says, "We have to contact them."
So we changed, so that language was deliberate to say, "We will make it available," not "we will send it to them." "We will make it available."
How do you make it available?
If it's on our website, it's available, right?
So then you make the declarative statement that says, "As such, the agenda is therefore available to the news media," you know, you--
So how about if we change it from "will be made" to "is"? "In addition, the agenda is available to--
I actually have the word "is" in my sentence.
Yeah, that's all you need. And there's no active, we're not making it available, it becomes available to--
Sure.
Then in its definitive addition, you say, you could say, "Therefore, the agenda is available to the news media." Okay? But whatever. All right, we're going to send that one back to the committee as well?
Do you, do you have notes that you can send so that when we're--
I have notes--
--have the committee meeting, we can--
I'm taking notes too.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
They're written on here, Steve.
I'm going to grab those as well.
Yeah, I'm not taking any-- Hopefully, your handwriting is better than mine.
Okay, the next one, questions is 1530, policy 1530, which is smoking, vaping, and other tobacco use on school premises. And, you know, the policy's pretty standard, but in my opinion, it doesn't go far enough and I'll say why. It talks about, you know, in schools or on buses or on campus. And my question is, it doesn't address school-sponsored trips or events. It doesn't address away sporting games, field trips, club trips, the cheerleaders going to Florida. It doesn't address the cheerleaders eating marijuana brownies in the hotel room, okay? It only talks about the bus and the school. We need to include any school-sponsored activity, event, or supervised. I mean, everybody agree with that? Okay, another one. So I did my homework here, guys. School safety plans and teams.
The next one, 81.
Okay, and I know this one is very technical, so I'm going to be brief on this one. But it talks about, "The board will appoint a direct school-wide safety team, including but not limited to, a representative from the following organizations: the board, teachers, administrators, and parent organizations; school safety personnel, and other school personnel." I think we should also include consultants outside. You might want to bring in a consultant from somewhere, a medical consultant, a security consultant, our local police, fire department. I know it says that you can do--
Including but not limited to, so--
I know it says you could use other people-- I know it says you could use other people, but I, I really think it should define those groups, not exclusively.
I think including but not limited to, so covers that. What I, what I think could be a concern is I don't want to have a policy that almost requests or demands or whatever or invites using contractors, you know, for.
Well, our, our security consultant has been a part of this team since it's been in place.
I understand.
The Eastchester Police Department and the Tuckhope Police Department have been on this plan.
Right.
Since it's been in place. I think they should be included.
I just, I just feel like it, it, it creates a perception that we would rather, you know, outsource things that we're not outsourcing. That's my opinion. And I, I think we don't want to go there. I don't want the policy to say, "Let's outsource," you know.
No, it's not, it wouldn't say that.
Well, but by specifying contractors, even though you're saying including not limited to, you're basically announcing we're, we're using contractors.
I believe what's stated here is like the core, this is the core team of individuals that would be typical, that we would call upon. The indication of but not limited to gives flexibility and it's situational, right? Situational right now where we have a consultant, it's situational where we do have the police. It's situation, I mean, granted the situation, you know, is, has been a couple of years now, but, but who knows five years from now? You know, will we need consultants? Will we need, you know, who knows what we'll need? That's my opinion.
So I think I agree with you.
So we, we think it's included?
I think it's included.
Okay, fine. On page two, it talks about the board may appoint a student representative to this team, but it puts all these restrictions on no confidential information should be shared with the student, they shouldn't be present during confidential building meetings and such and such and such. So I, my question is, should the policy therefore read, "The board may also appoint a student liaison to the team." And then the board could have a student appointed as a contact person to get student input onto this team, but they're not technically a member of the team and therefore, because they're not going to be exposed to all of these confidential items anyway. So is it better to call the person a liaison or a representative? And I'll open that up. What do you think?
My instinct is to default to the language that the legal team provided, but.
I never default to the legal team. I always question them.
I mean, I don't know.
Look at what happened this morning.
I know, but I don't know if, I'm not sure if, I mean, if you want to call it a liaison, we'd be happy to take it back, but I don't know.
Calling it a representative and putting all those restrictions on it, you're better off calling it a liaison because that accomplishes what you're trying to do, which is get student input into the plan, but you're not sharing the plan down to the student.
I, I think we do need to include these restrictions regardless of liaison or representative.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I think calling them a representative and then restricting them is not, I don't think is as good as calling them a liaison, but.
I'm, I'm indifferent.
You guys are all okay with representative?
I think student representative implies limited, you know, limited sections in general.
I, I read things literally.
I mean, I don't see any issue with it, but if you, if everyone wants a liaison, I think student representative.
What's the deal? Do we want to change it or no? If everybody says no, we just skip it. We're okay? All right, we'll leave that one alone.
Well, that one, if, if that changes, the only change.
There were no changes.
That's the first reading.
Right, okay.
So there are no changes, we'll put it.
That one we can, we can vote on as a first reading. We can vote that as a first reading because that one.
So, so just because, so that, because we're saying that one. So policy 8130, which is section 12.08, we're going to, will be one we will vote on.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and that's it.
So we, so we just vote on 1208? I think that's the only one we kept of the three.
Rob, here are the ones with the questions.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
Well, technically, we didn't vote on any policies yet.
Yeah, we, we're only first reading them, there's no vote.
Right, right, that's right. But the second reading.
Second reading we're voting on.
Correct.
To accept them.
We don't have to vote to accept the first reading? We don't have to vote to accept the first reading?
No, it's only a first reading for public subabsorption.
No, yeah, we adopt them as first readings.
We have to accept the first reading?
We've always accepted it.
Yeah, we, I think, yeah.
So which ones are we pulling out? Just to clarify.
Rob, what's it?
12.02.
12, 1230R, 2342 and 1530. Those are the ones we're pulling out.
Those are the ones that are going back to the committee.
That are going back to the committee.
Yes.
So we will vote on all of the others? Okay, so if you'd like, I can move.
All in favor?
Okay, well. Yeah, I'll, I'll be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the following policies after the first reading and second reading. So, and be it further resolved that the policies will be posted on the district's website for public viewing if it's second reading. And we have policy number 1230, policy number 1240, policy number 6700. We're going to rescind policy number 6323. And we have a first reading of policy 8130.
And then the other two items, you have to move also.
And then I will also move section 12.09, disposal ballots from the June 9th, 2020 annual meeting. Do I need to read the whole thing?
No, but you have one more.
And then I will also move that the Board of Education hereby approves the National High School Cheerleading Championships trip to Walt Disney World Resort in Orlando, Florida from February 9th to the 14th, 2022.
Okay, second, that was Chrissy, right? Okay, all in favor now? Good, all right, we're all in tune? Okay.
Are we doing the follow-up to DEI at this meeting? It's on the agenda, we haven't done it.
Wasn't that in the?
Superintendent's report.
Yeah, but we didn't.
Was it in the superintendent's report?
Right, we didn't do it. We stopped after the strategic.
Happy to do that if you'd like.
Okay, let's do it now.
Thank you. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Education and the community for receiving the report that we provided at our last board meeting on the results of the Diversity Equity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. When we provided that report, we had a number of reactions to it, as one would expect whenever you do that, that sort of work. First, first, before I talk about the reactions though, I want to, you know, just highlight for you the importance of this kind of work when it comes to be brought. It's not often in its final, you know, work plan format, much like the strategic plan tonight. You saw that there's three areas, three big buckets of work that have to occur. So I wanted to just make clear that the DEI work was taking, you know, the state document that was this broad and working within our community to focus on some, some buckets of work that makes sense for Eastchester. And so I would summarize those buckets, you know, as I, as I reflected on many of the comments and I'm thankful for the public comments and the feedback we've received on the plan. And of course, as you're aware, we've had some student comments along the line encouraging, you know, us to move in this work and to do elements of this work even in a more robust way. So, you know, in, in thinking about that feedback, I, I see, I would, I would look at the groups or the groupings or the buckets of work out of the DEI plan to be, you know, this idea of creating this Eastchester sort of sense of values, right, of we are Eastchester and what brings us together, what binds us, what defines us as one. Another one was a theme of mentorship, right? Peer-to-peer, adult-to-peer, et cetera. This, this notion of student voice, how do our students express and give feedback and participate in their environment to make the school meet their needs? I think you, you heard some of that in the presentation tonight from Jonathan where he's, where we talked about when a student walks across the stage, you talked about, "We don't make products, but we, we have a product," right? And our students ought to be able to be cognizant and aware of what these aims and purposes are, both from a DEI perspective and a strategic planning perspective. So these things really go together well. Another bucket out of DEI was critical reasoning, taking risks, having a growth mindset. I think that was actually, marries up very well with one of the, you know, one of the portions, skills that we were talking about in one of the dispositions. There was a notion in the DEI recommendations about getting some data collection, knowing where we are. From a culture and climate standpoint, that was implied, also from a, a, a learning element, I think, you know, teaching and learning element perspective that, that is there. We talked a little bit about student portfolios, students being able to present their work and track their work and have visual representations of their work over time to see the growth. And you heard about being able to be presenters of information, speakers, right? You, and then this notion of, of having DEI elements be embedded in the curriculum. So where you could, you could embed them and you could know where they are and you could identify how various elements that address, address different thought and culture could be embedded in the curriculum. So what I wanted to highlight was the fact that when we presented that to people, I completely appreciate some people, you know, many reactions could have been, this is still pretty nebulous, right? Or this is still not fully formed, or maybe this didn't go far enough, or maybe I'm not sure where this leads. And I think those are all valid reactions, you know, to, to the work that was presented. And at the same time, I want to just help us all keep in perspective that our goal was not to present a fully formed action plan that we're going to do this tomorrow. It was, at this level, it was to say, "We want to focus in on a few of these buckets." And I would submit that those buckets of work that I just listed off could represent decades worth of work. But where is the intersection between this work and the strategic plan work? When we, when we start to see those areas where these things intersect, we know we have some pretty high leverage points and some points of convergence that we should really focus on. And as we build out the action plans that we will be accountable for, many of these DEI elements can be built into the strategic planning work that we're going to talk to you about. And I would invite everybody to think about the goals that we set this year. We called them SMART goals. We made them, we made them pretty tangible, measurable. You know, you can look at it and say, "Did you do it or didn't you do it? And when are you going to do it?" And, and you can, you can be accountable for that. And I envision us doing a similar kind of thing and we did that without any real strategic long-term roadmap. We did that just on one year's worth of things that we knew we needed to do this year. But if we take that approach and apply it going forward to the DEI work and the strategic plan work and they more or less, you know, become more unified, I think you're going to, you're going to be able to have a more tangible expression of what to expect. And so I think one of the steps for us is to try to figure out, one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to start to talk to different groups and, you know, test out some of these buckets. Like I, I want to know from our teachers and our administrators and our students, well, which of these do you think are good ways to, where should we start? You know, what do you think about these things? We still need to get some reaction to know where to begin and how to, how to do the work. And so there's a lot of room in here for dialogue, a lot of room for discussion and a lot of room to engage our students. And the reason I keep bringing up engaging our students is it was a student voice component. It's, it's part of our strategic plan really, and it's something that we've been experiencing here at our board meetings where our students have been, I'm so excited that they're here wanting to tell us things, things that they think we need to hear about their experience, right? So, so there are ways that, you know, that's one avenue for expression is at the board meetings. And there are other avenues, I think that we need to identify that exist now and other avenues that we may want to create, that we may learn that we want to create. And we also want to make sure that we create structures that we're hearing from all, you know, a broad representative cross-section of our student body. And I just, I don't, I don't think that systemically, I think that what we want to do is focus, I, right now, on what are some steps we could immediately take to begin to dig deeper into these issues and ask our students, engage our students in some of that question. And part of this, by the way, I think also involves our collecting data. There are a lot of ways to collect data. And one of the things that was mentioned in our goals for this year was to start to look at tools for culture and climate, right? Because we wanted, we wanted to emphasize this year to start taking some steps toward creating a culture of belonging in a time when kids had been separated from school and out of school for so long that we wanted to, you know, create a more intentional way of knowing how are we doing in bonding together? And a lot of SCL work was, has been done this year with, under the direction of Dr. Urso and so many others. So I think that we'll be able to identify within the next, the coming weeks, ways that we can identify students who are stepping forward and want to engage and want to talk to us more. And we want to do that as broadly and systemically as we can. And, and we can do that, you know, in many, in many ways and we'll, we'll be looking for those opportunities because we need to understand from more stakeholder groups where the real priorities might be in some of these, if there are seven buckets, which two or three are the ones that we really need to start with? And you have to start by engaging stakeholders. And we've engaged stakeholders of, you know, the 27 people on the, on the task force, but there are more stakeholders that need to get involved in this conversation. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. I just wanted people to understand, this isn't done. It's a beginning and we're going to need to intentionally identify an action plan for engaging more people to, to refine it and then to be able to put a fine point on what we're going to do specifically. And I do see that we'll be able to, I'm hopeful we'll be able to include or merge together many of the themes between these two major initiatives. It's no coincidence that these two initiatives, the DEI task force and the strategic plan work, were delivered to you one board meeting apart. That was by design so that you would be able to see one and see the other and, and have the advantage of seeing the intersections where they exist. So I wanted to, you know, take a few minutes and follow up, thank people for their, their comments and their feedback and as well, give you a sense that it's not fully formed to really set that expectation. And, you know, perhaps maybe I didn't set that expectation, you know, when we talked about it as clearly as, as I could have, but I think this is an opportunity to do that now, let people know that it's a beginning.
I'm really, really, really happy to, to hear you talk about, you know, engaging student voice more. I think it's critical that we do that right away. I, I was so pleased that the final product, one page did say, you know, creating, talked about creating a welcoming, an affirming environment and it centered that on student voice. I think people feel valued and affirmed when they feel heard. So I think, you know, it's one thing that has been significant and different about this year, after six years on the board, is how much our students are coming to the board meetings and they want to get involved and they want to be heard and that's one constituent group. There are many students across the district that I can imagine it would be really, really valuable to hear from, starting with the high school to think about ways to create a welcoming and affirming environment and a safe, a safe affirming culture in the school, starting with the high school. I just don't think you can meaningfully access your education if you don't feel safe. And it's imperative on us to hear from students, our, you know, tomorrow's leaders who have been coming to these meetings, special education students, students in various clubs that are very active, as student athletes, our, you know, student government. We need to hear from these constituent groups of students to really understand from, they're the ones who are living and experiencing the culture as students and they, I think they've demonstrated to us again and again, they want to, they want to have a voice. And I think starting there and getting their input will, will sort of help us go more granular into the DEI work that we want to do, but I think also do it, do it in more meaningfully heartfelt ways. And I, I hope students keep showing up to our meetings. So thank you for highlighting that.
Sure, thank you. I, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks, thanks for the update, Doc. And that moves us to the last item on our agenda, which is, the board's going to have a discussion about the possibility of a. the board's going to have a discussion about the possibility of a resolution regarding use of masks. Now, as everybody knows, this, this has changed, what, four times in the last? No, less than that, because it's probably about 21 hours at this point. But the, the earth is moving on this. There's no, there's no terra firma, okay? And so we're going to have a discussion on it, but what we're going to do is we're going to ask if anyone in the public would like to come up and speak on that subject. I just remind you, you know, half of you are going to be on one side of it, probably, and half of you are going to be on the other side of it. So just be respectful of each other. Let's not have any applause and jeering or any of that stuff. But just come up, sign up, say what you have to say. Yes, the lady who was first before, please come up to. But if anybody else would like to come up to, because we're going to try to hold it, our policy is 30 minutes for public comments. And it's three minutes per person, so that gives us 10 people. So if you want to speak, please come up and sign the thing and we'll deal with it, okay? Go ahead. And you could, you could sit down while you're speaking as long as, you know, you're not, nobody's in your face, okay?
Thank you. I'm just going to start again.
Sure.
Recently, we honored Dr. Martin--
Please identify who you are also.
Kathy Belly. Okay. Recently, we honored Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., where I came across a quote that resonated with me. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." This quote could not be any more relevant today as we continue to advocate for our children. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Glass for acting on the recent New York State Supreme Court decision blocking the statewide mandate. Although the court issued a stay this afternoon, we appreciate you supporting the choice for our families. Our children have been waiting for this day. And in the words of my six-year-old daughter, "Mommy, today is the best day ever. Throw out all of my masks," she said. "Our children are not resilient. They just can't express all of the ways that we have let them down." Today, my daughter came home from school and told me that she didn't have to keep repeating herself when speaking. She said it was the first time she could see her teacher's face and she could see hers. She also said how fun gym was today because she wasn't sweating under an uncomfortable mask. Today, my daughter felt free in so many ways. For the past two years, our society has accepted more harm to children in exchange for less harm to adults. We have done everything possible to minimize the spread of COVID rather than minimize the damage that COVID does to society, especially children, the least vulnerable to this virus. Tonight, I'm asking the board, consider the words of my very young daughter. She is counting on us to do what is right. This was the best day ever for her and for many children who were finally given permission today to simply be children again. As parents, we are asking that the board continue to advocate by writing a letter to the state and voting on a resolution for mask choice to take effect once schools are no longer mandated. In addition, we are asking that our COVID social distancing protocols at Waverly, please be revisited. Please let our children eat together at tables and not on the floor. Please allow them to socialize. Please allow them to socialize and learn through authentic play and not with safety spiders that keep them apart. Together, we can continue to speak about what matters the most, our children. Thank you.
Suzanne Johnson, 14, Inisfree. Good evening, everyone.
Could you move a little closer so you--
Closer?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. First, I want to say kudos to the board and everyone who signed the letter of advocacy to the governor regarding the mandates for, for our kids. I commend the board members who supported this effort. It takes courage to do the right thing. Doing the right thing in a relationship builds trust. In the relationship between the school administration and the community, trust is essential. The leadership in this district is asking taxpayers to fund an almost $76 million bond with little trust in this district administration. In the past two years, this administration sold our kids out for money. The district took $541,000 in COVID relief funds. And in return, our kids have endured masking, testing, quarantines. They sold out our parents and violated their right to make their own medical decisions for something that has an over 99% survival rate for kids and most adults. This administration has held, withheld vital information regarding the implementation of DEI principles into the curriculum from the parents. Just this week, MAP testing headed by the NWEA is in our classrooms to ensure that equity and inclusion is, is overseen. The DEI task force gave their findings at the last meeting. It was pretty watered down and we still don't have an idea of the extent of the DEI in the classroom, except now we understand there's a strategic planning, which was also cryptic. This administration sunk half a million dollars into social emotional learning that counters our children without parent consent. They're collecting data on our children and basically keeping dossiers on them. This administration has promulgated the notion that our community is racist. I have yet to hear the superintendent or anyone else at these meetings denounce any of the accusations. This administration took it upon itself to fire a longtime high school security guard and replace him with some security force that could care less about our kids, all to prop up a $19 million safety and security bond. Since the leadership has decided not to give taxpayers choice in this all or nothing $76 million vote to fix our schools, I say no. While we may need repairs on our buildings, our system is broken and this is too much money. We don't trust the administration and sorry, we don't trust the superintendent. Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody that, you know, you're free to say what's on your mind, but you're not free to say anything about particular personnel. So that was out of line and I'm calling it out of line. And let's go on from here.
Hello. Nina McAdoo, 44, Intralekan Drive. You know, I was going to talk about two things, DEI task force and mask policy, but I'll also just add, I unreservedly support the bond. I think it's very necessary and I think our community should too. So I'll start with that. On the DEI task force, my view on this, as Dr. Glass said, is it's a start. It's a good start. I did want to emphasize a couple of things. Whether we're comfortable with it or not, very substantive efforts to diversify not just corporate America, but the corporate world, and this is relevant to our kids. They're here and they're intensifying. These uncomfortable conversations are not going to go away. And I will tell you that cultural competency is valuable currency in today's workforce that we have an obligation to teach our students. And speaking of students, I do agree that the student perspective has not yet been taken into account. I'm really glad that it seems like it will be. It really needs to be. They have the most at stake. On the mask policy, I was among the many who were disappointed today with the administration's hasty abandonment of the mask policy. I saw Dr. Glass's very lawyerly last communication on this. But it's really no surprise that the state immediately challenged yesterday's Supreme Court decision. And lo and behold, they did get an injunction as expected, the same business day, which stays in validation of the rule. It's also no surprise the state Department of Education would come out in support of the state's appeal and direct districts to continue to enforce the rule. We really don't want to be on the wrong side of the Department of Ed. So I don't understand the disruptive rush to end the masking requirement. I don't think the district would have been at great legal risk for maintaining status quo for one day as neighboring districts like Scarsdale and Pelham did. The lightning speed moves today in a district that doesn't always move that fast is also puzzling because as the board's resolution reflects, the state masking requirement in schools scheduled to expire soon anyway. The action smack of catering to a vocal minority who have been agitating for this action for months without consideration for what I would submit is a less vocal majority. Let me be clear, I hate masks as much as anyone. My daughter, I want to tell you a story, became about mitzvah this weekend. And our pictures and memories of her unbelievably moving and special day will forever be marked by us all having to wear these KN95 masks and wearing now in temple, even when my daughter was chanting from the Torah. However, when you cut through all the confusing guidance, it's clear that although masks are imperfect, they're one of the few tools we have to fight this virus. And they're more effective when we wear them together in interior spaces. People are still dying from COVID, including children. And as a society, we should care about infecting others. It troubles me that many in our community don't seem to care. I don't know how anyone could think it's okay for someone's child to be unnecessarily sick or in the hospital. I'm just about done. I've had that experience of your child going to the ER in an ambulance and it was one of the scariest days of my life. I don't wish it on anyone. So if the board wants to end our policy, once the state mandate ends, it's hard to argue with that logic. But let's not kid ourselves that that's risk-free. It's not. And I pray that in whatever our new normal is, we remember that with freedom comes responsibility and that we are our brothers and sisters keeper. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cardinal Smith. I'm at 883 California Road. And first, I want to thank everyone who participated in the strategic planning. It was actually really great to hear about educational curriculum content at these meetings for a change. And so I am thankful for that. Next, I don't, first, there was, someone mentioned at a previous meeting that the vast majority of the community does not support masks, does not support vaccines. And I just want to make it clear that I, I do support masks. I do support vaccines. But I'm not up here to talk about our mask policy. I'm up here to talk about the way in which the decisions today were handled. I, in fact, find it quite reprehensible that an email went out approximately 7:30 this morning when children had either already entered school buildings, were in school buildings, were getting put on buses, or were getting ready by their parents to leave their homes. It did not afford parents the opportunity to read the email that came from the district, nor did it give parents the opportunity to speak to their children about what these changes actually meant. So therefore, our children are going into these situations and they don't even understand the changes that are occurring. Those decisions were taken away from me as a parent to have a conversation with my child, to prepare my child for what that meant based on the teaching that happens in my home. And the same is true for all parents, regardless of whether you are pro or anti-mask. Furthermore, my email and texts were flooded today by other parents who couldn't be here today, who literally shared stories about calling the school to tell their children to make sure they have their masks on or running after their children on the bus to say, "Stay away from the kids that aren't masked. Don't go near the kids that are masked." Like, is that really the message that we want to tell our children either way? We talk about wanting to promote the social emotional wellness and health of our children. That, to me, is not the way to do it. And so, you know, I think, I want to leave with this, with this, you know, this story. As my, as my fourth grader comes home every day and I ask her how her day went. Today, I said, "How did it go? Did anybody talk about masks in school today?" She shared that one student in her class was not masked. And then she said to me, and I quote, "Mom, student X has a grandmother who has cancer. And her grandmother can get really sick or go to the hospital if she gets the flu or a cold." And so my friends and I in class today talked about how it was important to wear our masks so that student X's grandmother could be protected. I think there's in fact a lot that we can learn from our children. And to those of you who did not support the way in which this decision or the way in which this was handled around that, this table, I thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Chrissy Malteese, 17 Ridge Street. I'm absolutely upset by the district email received this evening. These mandates merely five hours ago were deemed unlawful and unconstitutional, yet we still have to enforce this rule upon our children. How much longer can we subject ourselves and children to this? At what point do we say enough is enough and it's time to move on? At this point, the majority of people have been vaccinated or infected. We might have to just accept the realization that this virus will be here to stay and learn to live in a world where it exists. When I told my children this morning that they can choose not to be masked, they were beyond relieved, to say the least. I also spoke with them about respecting anyone that still chooses to wear one, whereas some parents instructed their kids not to sit next or talk to anyone unmasked. There were teachers announcing to classmates, if they felt uncomfortable with the non-maskers, to please speak up. There was also harsh comments made towards kids choosing not to wear one. Let me ask you, where is the inclusiveness in these actions? This is total discrimination towards these children. There was also a couple of stories of children hiding in the bathrooms and texting their parents scared for their lives due to these unmasked kids. To me, this is just incredibly saddening. My kids have all had COVID. I'm not worried about the virus. I'm more worried about that anxiety-stricken child that's hiding in the bathroom. The longer this continues, the worse the ramifications may be. Today, one of my kids still wanted his mask because he said his teachers were scared and that they might hate him. Is this normal? Am I the only one that thinks this is terrible to put on our kids? Not everyone will agree with whatever the final decision may be. But we should all have our right to choose. Please, I ask you, just use your voice to help advocate for our communities' rights against this governor's unlawful mandates. Thank you.
Adam Weisman, 260, Garth Road. Yeah, so my daughter attends Waverly. And when I got the email, when I saw the email this morning, I was pretty excited. I was like, oh, wow. I said, I said to her, when I was driving her to school, I said, "You don't have to wear a mask today." I said, "Do you want to wear a mask?" And she said, "No," and she broke out into a smile. She's like, "I really don't have to wear it." I said, "Maybe just today. I don't know," you know? And it turned out, you know, she was the only one because I think a lot of parents missed the email or whatever and with the, with the short timing and that type of thing. She said that she enjoyed, she said, "School is nice. She was able to, you know, talk more clearly and comfortably." She said, "She, she's going to lose a tooth soon." And she said that she was glad that she didn't have to wear the mask because it pushes on her wiggly tooth. She also said that a few of her teachers were very, were really kind to her and said that, that they were so happy to finally see her face, what she looked like. And, and that's all going to be over tomorrow. I know it's not your, I know it's not your fault and all that stuff. I mean, I mean, I mean, I blame, quite frankly, I blame New York State. I think there's probably more, maybe there's more that we could do as parents, as a board here to stand up against this type of stuff. But, you know, I-- Martin Luther King quote that I wanted to read. It's the one, it's really, the really the famous one, says, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character," right? Everybody knows that quote. Everyone's familiar with it, I hope. But today, one of the things that's really upsetting is it seems that that, it's, except, there should be an asterisk, unless you're, unless you're not vaccinated or not masked. Because then if you're masked, if you're not masked or you're unvaccinated or whatever, then it's like you can be oppressed or persecuted or whatever, and it's totally cool. It's totally fine. I mean, it's not, but that seems-- I mean, it's not, but that seems to be the general way that things, that people are going. So, I know, again, I don't, it's not necessarily up to you, but if there's more that you could do to allow parents, or even just the kids to choose. I gave the choice basically to my daughter, I said, "Do you want to wear it?" And she was like, "No." She's gonna go back to wearing it tomorrow, you know? And it's sad, it's depressing, and when we talk about trust and all that stuff, like Suzanne was talking about, I would like to be able to trust more in what can be done, or what people can do or willing to do, but I feel sadly that I can't. And I would hope that more parents that feel this way speak up, because I think it's disgusting, people coming up here and saying, "Oh, you know, we're the vocal, the silent majority," when it's very so easy to say that, when it means absolutely nothing. The end.
I live at 59 Lawrence Avenue. I have a second grader, a kindergartner, and a three-year-old. I was on the Strategic Coherence Planning Committee, which is why I am here today. I, trying to think, I, a couple other things just about me. I lead a nonprofit dedicated to getting more people to talk about and care for their mental health, using pop culture and other super fun things. And I am a Girl Scout leader of two troops in the district. We have a second grade troop in Greenville and Ann Hutch, and I've got a group of girls at Waverly in kindergarten. I wanted to just talk a little bit about the Strategic Coherence Planning Committee from a parent's perspective. I thought it was an amazing process. I, before 2020, when we had lockdown, and we were home with our children and watching them in the classroom, I had absolutely no exposure to the school district, to how decisions got made, the hierarchy of administration, and teachers, and principals, and all of that. And we were sort of all forced to, if we, that wasn't something we were used to or knew, we were kind of forced to learn all of this through being home with our kids while they were learning, getting the emails, wanting to understand what all of these rules meant. So when Dr. Glass sent through the request for people to join the committee, I am good at a lot of things, and I'm not great at a lot of things. Strategic planning seemed like something I should join, so I was excited to, the process, which I think Jonathan has gone, but it was a remarkable process. We really did collect data everywhere. I just want to just comment on the crypticness. There's literally drives of so much data that we collected, and it was really, really exciting to see how passionate the administration is and how passionate the teachers are. There was a lot of disagreement, and it was healthy, passionate disagreement, and just sort of, to the tone of the public comments here, I was personally, as a parent, super disappointed to read the email this evening, that we no longer had a mask optional choice, and that is my family's decision. But I really appreciated the last sentence, or the last paragraph in Dr. Glass's email around compassion and empathy. And what I understand is that everyone's got choices for their family and concerns for their family on both sides, and I just would love to see more sort of open-mindedness and kindness towards each other, like we had in the Strategic Coherence Planning when there were problems. Thank you.
Tim Mox, 62 Waterside Close. Complex problem solving, empathy, civic responsibility, data-driven decision-making, right? So these are the, these are the values that you want to instill in the children that come through your school system. I implore you to think about these values when you make this decision on masks. What does the data look like? The data says we should be wearing better masks, not removing them. Right? The data says that there are millions of people worldwide that have died from this. There is going to be a time when we should remove the masks, but we should do that on a well-thought-out risk assessment. Right? What is the risk? And yes, yes, the children are less likely to have drastically adverse outcomes from COVID. But these variants change. As you can, as you've probably read, younger children have a much harder time with this newer variant. Their nasal passages don't clear nearly as well as us adults do. These sort of things, you play into these decisions that you must make. Right? So, yes, we need to get the masks off someday, hopefully soon, right? But in the middle of the downward slide off of a very high peak, is this the time when the transmission rate is still high in the whole United States to remove masks? I mean, maybe we could come up with, maybe you could decide on some thresholds. I mean, we've had two years to figure this out. We could have thresholds that we say, you know, if our transmission rate is below this threshold, then it's okay to have children unmasked. We could make that decision. We could even get down to a lower threshold and say, you know, after this point, you know, we can move them closer together. But if we can just please, you know, use the data, make sound decisions, have empathy, civic responsibility, we come here and we pledge to the flag that we're going to protect the most vulnerable among us. Think about, you know, it's not just the children, it's teaching the children, it's teaching the children.
If you speak up again, I might recess the meeting, so let's just keep it quiet in the audience, and let, give the man his time. We gave everyone else their time, go ahead.
Right. We're teaching the children civic responsibility. Protect the weakest among us, those with cancer, those young children that don't have an opportunity to be vaccinated yet. What can we do that, in a common sense, data-driven way, to remove the masks when they should be removed? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and let's keep it respectful out there, please. Okay?
I concur. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Chris Johnson, 14 Industry Place. I want to thank the board for their hard work. I know it's a thankless job, and we appreciate your efforts. You know, I have a lot of employees that work for me, and when I pay their salary, I have every right to criticize their performance. And everyone in here pays a superintendent's salary, so we can absolutely criticize his performance. Now, you want to talk about a product? This is Adrian. I met him six hours ago. Here's a young man, ninth grade, he goes to East Chester High School, he's standing up for his principals, smart young man. You know what he experienced today? He was sent to the office, teachers were using the F-bomb because he wasn't wearing a mask, they were cursing. One of his friends was not allowed on the bus to go to Bozy, Boise. That's unsat. Who's the adult in the room here? Sounds like it's Adrian. That's unsatisfactory. We need to fix that behavior. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna start putting our kids first. You want our bond money? Put our kids first. Mandates need to go. That bond is so overinflated, that's my area of expertise, building maintenance. And you're way off the mark, and you want our money, but you're putting our kids last? How he was treated today is completely unacceptable. Unacceptable. Really burns my backside. Should be personal choice, no mandates, pretty simple. Everyone knows these masks don't work, come on. Half the people here, I mean, maybe we should just put restaurant tables in our classrooms, and we can sit down without masks. I mean, really, think about it, let's leave some logic. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aaron Pollak.
You're gonna have to tip the mic and get closer.
Can you hear me?
Not well.
All good? No?
Closer.
Hello?
Now you're good.
Ah, okay. I just wanted to ask, is this open to all public comments, or is this just about mask mandates?
This is the open comment period, yes, you can talk.
So everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, my name is Aaron Pollak. I'm a senior at East Chester High School, and I'm looking forward to talking about peer mentoring. But before I get into that, I want to talk about the environment in school, and why this is important. In light of the recent DEI recommendations, I was first and foremost disappointed. Frankly, they were vague and consisted mostly of improvements that were ground-level work I expected to have already been done years ago. But peer mentoring is one recommendation that could have a genuine impact and could be easily implemented. There are blatant anti-Asian slurs being said over the last year due to COVID, acts of antisemitism within the school. I'm sure you have heard about the injustices my peers have faced. I'm Jewish. In the past, I've seen swastikas in the bathroom, I've had pennies thrown at me, and now I hear of someone, someone in my grade, a senior, doing a Nazi salute. That is not okay. Just gotta find my place again. I've heard nothing in the past, nor now, about either of these situations being rectified. I only tell you my perspective to show how little these recommendations will change anything. We need to take the resources we have been given by the state to actively make change, rather than give recommendations that do little more than acknowledge the small steps our schools are already taking. Those small steps may include international nights, yet we learn little about international cultures in our classrooms. We have support, we have support systems for students when they need learning accommodations, yet when the accommodation is needed to amplify their voice, little is actually done to encourage and support them. For example, encouraging peer-to-peer mentors is a tangible action plan that will unite our community. A simple "We are East Chester" written in jumbo markers is not going to do this. Not only does this create community service opportunities for high school students, but also fosters communication between grade levels, and can foster student voice just by allowing students to actively assess the opinions of other students they wouldn't otherwise get a chance to communicate with. But simply having a senior talking to a freshman isn't enough. There should be opportunities for peer groups to be made with students from each grade level to continue to gain advice and actively communicate with each other. They should start in elementary school. Division is created when we refuse to talk with each other, or when we actively see people growing away from one another and choose to do nothing about it. We, as high school students, may feel alone, like no one could possibly relate to either our sexual identity, gender identity, religious affiliation, or ethnicity. But talking to either older or younger students can create genuine feelings of inclusivity, while also building leadership skills, high-level social skills, and empathy. We need to be proactive, not reactive. Vague recommendations result in vague misguided solutions. I hope you have heard me. I hope you will continue to listen to the voices of the students. I'm ecstatic, don't get me wrong, I'm ecstatic that the students, no, sorry, that East Chester has a DEI task force. But I hope that the recommendations are only the beginning, because to be frank, they need to be. Thank you very much for your time.
It looks, looks to me that there's only two people left, so we hit thirty, thirty minutes?
Thirty-three minutes right now.
All right, so let's, let's keep going.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure. My name is Kushvi Delaney, I'm a senior at East Chester High School, and I co-lead tomorrow's leaders. You've seen me and my peers stand here time and time again, coming to the board and the East Chester community with our personal experiences, our requests for change, and our passion to be engaged. We plan extensively to place our words in a way that it grasps your attention, and rehearse our three-minute speeches to a level at which we are certain we will keep your attention. We stress ourselves out to the, over the possibility that the next board meeting we go to will be the one where someone crosses the line and we get harassed. I am grateful that our district has a board of education environment that is just tense, and doesn't reflect the unsafe and physically violent nature of those across the country. However, I do believe we have gotten to a certain point where enough is enough, and I think we can take a break from rosy pleads and uplifting attitudes. We are a group of high school students. We are learning for the very first time how to be a person in this world, how to interact with people, how to take care of ourselves, how to fight for what we believe in, how to make decisions. Our biggest problems should be our speeches in English, the next calc test, college essays. They shouldn't be about feeling unsafe at school board meetings. They shouldn't be about feeling unsafe at school because of slurs, because we're afraid of getting verbally attacked, or any of the things that we have brought to your attention. We shouldn't have to come to these meetings begging for changes. We are grateful that it's come to the point that you're opening up to the idea for student engagement, don't get me wrong, but we have so much to say that we've been saying it since August, but we shouldn't have even had this much to bring to your attention. But I do understand that, you know, we're taking steps to make, you know, real change. These are small, small, tiny stepping stones, and I'm here to say that I feel like if you did go to the students and you asked us, we might laugh over the idea of a book that's supposed to address diversity without really addressing diversity. What about the books about the real voices that are missing from our conversations? The real voices who come to these meetings and tell you about our experiences? The voices that don't get any action taken on our experiences until we raise it for the fifth time? We're seniors, we're juniors, we're freshmen, we're sophomores, we're exhausted, we stay here till midnight sometimes, we're afraid of getting verbally attacked, we're afraid that one day someone will cross the line, and we shouldn't be. We shouldn't be spending our time in the library at 9:45 PM doing math homework and waiting to speak to you about the problems that we're facing at school, because we deserve a better community. And the three words "We are East Chester" may be a very small step, but we need to actually build that community. So I'm sure tomorrow's leaders would be happy to help out if you're looking for student engagement. We have so much to give you, but I think we need a little bit more than what was presented to us two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Weisman, 260 Garth Road. I sent out the board yesterday a video clip. I think it's about five hours long, I'm sure you didn't get a chance to watch it, but it was Senator Ron Johnson held a hearing in Washington DC, where he had people like Dr. Robert Malone, who was as nine patents in mRNA technology, he had Dr. McCullough, who is one of the most cited doctors, cardiologists, and very knowledgeable on COVID-19, Dr. Erso, there were countless doctors. And what they pointed out, contrary to one of the people that spoke here before, is that Omicron is not a serious, it is, it is a milder form of COVID, and it is reaching endemic proportions. I myself just had COVID three weeks ago, my entire family, we weren't vaccinated, and now we have natural immunity, including the three-year-old and the six-year-old. I know many other families who since Christmas have had COVID, have had the Omicron version. It is not the terrifying scourge that's going to kill, you know, it is not the original COVID-19. So what I'd like to know is, what is this community doing to find out when, when are we at a proportion where you have people with natural immunity, people that are vaccinated, and that we can finally remove these masks and get back to living normal lives, instead of going on and on with these countermeasures, instead of just letting people be? So that's what I'd like to know. What is the research on masks? Because what I've seen is the research on masks, masks for doctors are really to prevent droplets from falling into a patient who's on the operating table. It does not prevent the aerosolized virus that goes out into the environment and into the air. It doesn't, it can't do that. I'm sure you've seen the analogy, it's like trying to keep a mosquito It's like trying to keep a mosquito from going through a chain-link fence. So masks are not the protection that some people think it is. And I'd just like to know, between natural immunity and vaccination, when will we end this?
Thank you. It looks like, how many more people? We have two? Okay, so the board, everybody's okay with extending it and two more, two more speakers for now? Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brian Leonardo. I have two girls in the schools here. One doesn't mind wearing the mask and the other one hates it. I gave her the option today to not wear it. She didn't. And the principal came into her classroom and asked her why she didn't have a mask on. So that's very concerning to me, that as her parent and her making the choice, that a principal still came in and asked her that. And I want to make sure that that's not something everyone hears behind. Thank you.
Hi, Diargashi. I just want to cite quickly about a report, a study that was done and published in NIH. A study that was done about masks and was published in NIH. Can you hear me now? Yeah, it's a good idea. Hello, can you hear me now? All right, so a study on masks was done, surgical masks. It's called Preliminary Report on Surgical Mask Induced Deoxygenation During Major Surgery. It's published in NIH. It's a better at all. So objective, this study was undertaken to evaluate whether the surgeon's oxygen saturation of hemoglobin was affected by the surgical mask or not during major operations. Methods, repeated measures, longitudinal and prospective observational study was performed with 53 surgeons. Results, our study revealed a decrease in the oxygen saturation of arterial pulsations and a slight increase in pulse rates compared to preoperative values in all surgeon groups. Now, another citation from Wikipedia. It pretty much says that "normal arterial blood oxygen saturation levels in humans are 95% to 100%. If the level is below 90%, it is considered low and called hypoxemia. Arterial blood oxygen levels below 80% may compromise organ function such as brain and heart and should be promptly addressed. Continued low oxygen levels may lead to respiratory, cardiac, and cardiac arrest." So to the person who was like advocating for even safer masks, this, I would urge him to seriously consider the effects that the mask can have, especially since, you know, like our kids are using these for 40 hours a week. And these were done, these decreased oxygen saturation were done over a period of one to two hours. Okay, so it's like, do you want to take a chance with a, with a disease that has, that's as dangerous as a common cold or a flu? Or do you want to get a cardiac arrest because of your decreasing oxygen levels? Thank you very much, everybody.
Hi, I think I'm the last one. Katie Pizari, I live at 30 Dorchester Road. I have two children that are in the district now, a third grader at Ann Hutch and a first grader at Waverly, and a four-year-old who will enter kindergarten in September. I just, I wasn't going to say anything but felt compelled after, I think Brian, a few moments ago, had shared what happened with his children today in school. My family made the decision this morning after getting Dr. Glass's email that we were going to give the kids the choice whether or not to wear a mask. Both of my kids were very excited not to. At about 10 o'clock this morning, my daughter, who's in first grade, I got an email from her teacher asking me to confirm whether or not I wanted my daughter to wear a mask or not in school today. So I don't know if that's been something that anyone else experienced, but just wanted to share that that was a question. It was a very nice email, but again, I felt that it was unnecessary based on the communication from the district for her to even question the decision that was made. And I also did tell my six-year-old to go into school with a copy of Dr. Glass's email just in case anyone questioned her about why she wasn't wearing a mask, that she could say that her mom and Dr. Glass said it was an option. So I did tell her that. In terms of my third grader, when I asked him about how his day went and he said it was great, but he also shared with me that he had a conversation with the principal today at Ann Hutch and that he was asked about his mask. This is the first that he's told me all year that he's had any conversation with the principal, and this happened in his classroom. So I just wanted to share that. I don't know, you know, how things are going to go over the next few days, weeks, months. But again, I support families having a choice, parents having a choice on how to parent their kids, and I think that that should be supported across the board. And I thank you all for, you know, for your efforts. I know it's hard what you're up here doing, and I appreciate that, but just wanted to share what our experience was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Fortuna, I have two children in the district as well.
Two more and that's it, okay? So go ahead.
The theme, a very recurring theme tonight is having students and children voices heard. My children are six and four. They can't come here. They can't express this. I'm doing it on their behalf, and everyone you hear clapping behind me is doing the same for their children. So if you're going to hear all the high school students, please hear our children that don't have the voice and the ability to come out and say it directly to you because we are. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close that part of the meeting now, and we're going to go to our discussion. And what did we call this on the agenda here? Discussion on potential for a mask resolution. So who'd like to open up the discussion?
Before you do.
Sure.
Might I, might I make some?
Oh, absolutely.
Actual corrections to some statements that were made tonight?
Go right ahead.
There were, there were just a few, and I just think it's important to have correct information on when statements are made that are incorrect. There was a statement made that vital information was withheld from the DEI process. So to me, that, that term withholding vital information connoted some intention to obfuscate or hide. There, you know, there is no, nothing that was hidden. I will freely admit that the meetings were closed, they were not open for everyone to attend. And that was made clear, and that was because the conversations that were being had were sometimes sensitive and difficult, and we wanted people to have honest conversations without others who were not part of the task force, you know, to perhaps just hear a portion of the conversation and come away with, you know, impressions that were, were not fully formed by the context. And so we did post, you know, the agendas. We did post artifacts. If you go to our website, you will find them. The last two meetings, we did not post agendas and artifacts. And for those who were part of the DEI task force, you know that it was simply a work group, and we were building the PowerPoint that was ultimately presented to the committee, to the community at the last board meeting. The second inaccuracy I want to talk about is with regard to MAP testing and NWEA testing. These are tests that are academic. They're not anything to do with emotional intelligence or anything to do with anything DEI-related. They're completely academic. And so these are tests that are new that we've reported on at board meetings. And they are there so that we can get a handle on any learning loss that our students may have experienced. They're there so that we can know how well our children are progressing in relationship to national cohorts. So I just wanted to correct that. The MAP test, the NWEA test, they're purely academic. They are not, they have nothing to do with social, emotional learning. And then there was a statement made about keeping dossiers on children. It is true that we keep, we do collect data on children. We want to understand, you know, their learning. We want to have, we want to know what their test scores are. We want to know what the assessment scores are. We do notice when students are struggling, and we do have counselors and others to assist with that. But the implication of keeping dossiers of any personal or inappropriate information is inaccurate. We only keep information that is there to assist the adults in supporting the children in appropriate ways. And, and the last one I want to talk about is that we fired a high school guard to replace a guard with a, with a firm. Actually, the guard that was fired was employed by the same firm that we currently retain. All of our guards are from one firm, and the guard who was not retained with us was from that firm. So it's different, that's different than saying we didn't like this individual who was employed by us and then therefore terminated that individual and employed a firm. That is not what occurred. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So let's, let's go to our discussion on the potential for a resolution regarding masks. So Joni, you want to take the lead on that one?
Sure. So first, I just wanted to kind of address the context of the day because this resolution was conceived before, you know, the court decisions today. And I know there were, there was kind of a whirlwind of communications, and there were a lot of people that were upset about miscommunications and possibly leading to conflicts in the schools, and people that felt that they didn't get much notice. And, and, you know, maybe some people trying to lay blame. But I would like to defend our administration. I don't think there was a rush to go mask optional today. I think there was a lot of conflicting information, including, you know, from state officials and from lawyers and from other superintendents. And I think there was some concern that if the mandate wasn't lifted, that that could have been inappropriate or even unlawful in some ways. So I'm not saying that's true, but it wasn't just a rush to do things quickly. I don't think anybody wanted to rush and cause miscommunications. So I just wanted to say that quickly. Regarding the resolution, this kind of came about last week, inspired by Massapequa Board, who kind of pointed out to everybody that the latest emergency regulation 10 NYCRR 2.60 is expiring next month, and it's been renewed several times. I think it was renewed kind of early fall, end of the summer, and then in November. And I think most of us assumed that it was going to be renewed over and over again. So we didn't feel the need to take any kind of action on it. But, you know, after the Massapequa Board voted, the governor did make some statements to the effect that, you know, she was possibly planning to let this emergency regulation lapse and that she, you know, kind of expected that certain schools were no longer going to require masks, which prompted me to draft up this resolution. Again, I don't think it's necessarily, you know, necessary for us to vote on this. I think probably the administration could lift a mask mandate once these requirements go away. But I did think it was important, you know, looking at the events of today, one, we want to give people as much notice as possible if there is going to be a lifting of the mandate. So I thought it was important to have a formal resolution, you know, just to give people a date and some expectations about what was going to happen. You know, a number of people were, over the past few days have been somewhat, you know, they've been protesting and expressing themselves, and I think the tensions are high. I also thought doing this resolution, giving a kind of a formal date would provide a bit of light at the end of the tunnel that might ease some of the tensions around this topic. And then, you know, kind of the last reason that I wanted to have this resolution is in the hopes that we might get some other boards to pass a similar one. So, you know, I don't have any illusions that we're going to be convincing the governor or anybody to do anything, but if we can possibly inspire some other school boards to pass a similar resolution, hopefully we'll put some pressure on the Department of Health to either not renew their determinations or let these emergency regulations expire.
Just for the benefit of the public, I want to say what transpired between yesterday and this evening, okay, is very well summarized in an email that Dr. Glass sent out today at 5:48. If you haven't read it yet, I'm not going to read it. It's pretty lengthy. But it's pretty detailed about how things transpired over the last day or two. And the administration was very concerned, as Jonah said, about doing something that is technically against the law. And there was an interpretation last night, please, Doc, correct me if I, if I mistake the way this happened. But we were communicating, we actually spoke last night about 12:30 in the morning, okay? So there's been a lot of attention given to this matter. And the actions on, on Long Island with the court decision and whether it was an automatic stay or if they had to file an appeal, and then that didn't generate it all. That was all very foggy, and the decision was made early in the morning is that, that children or parents would be given the option, okay? Right, wrong, or indifferent, that was the decision at the time, based on the information at the time. And as we know through this entire day, things have changed. And in this email that Dr. Glass wrote, and everybody, I just refer, please go and read it if you haven't seen it yet. The very end, it says, "Things are going to change again." This, which court is it? The appeals court is going, they're expecting to make a ruling on Friday regarding whether the mandate stays or not. And so basically, Dr. Glass is telling the community that for now, we're going to wear masks until Friday, and we're going to see what happens. So if anybody wants to add to that, anything else? Yes, Chrissy, go ahead.
I know there's been so much conflicting information. I think we were all confused today. And I know we, as a board, got a lot of clarity today through Dr. Glass, through our school lawyers. So I wanted to just kind of make it clear and have a discussion amongst us and also to the community that we follow the state mandates. So if there's a state mandate, we have to follow it. As of this morning, there was no state mandate, none, so for masks. So we did not have the legal authority to enforce masks. So it wasn't that we were making rash decisions at the last minute. If students went to school with no masks today, we had no legal authority to say they can't be here because there's no mandate, and that's not up to us. So now, as of tonight, there's a mandate, so we're all wearing masks again. But whenever that mandate is lifted, whether that be this week, next week, or next month, we go back to, we have no legal authority. So when the mandate is lifted, it's not up to us. That is automatically parent choice because it is, we, we don't have the legal authority to tell children to wear masks at school, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm happy to vote, but...
Well, we're not, we're not doing the resolution because yesterday, the resolution was a good idea. Today, and today, it's moved, it's pretty much moved.
Illegal, and, and again, I'm not acting as a lawyer. We should, we should talk to our lawyers. In the context, I'm not exactly sure that we, that a school would not have the authority. That's possible. I just don't know that that question has been specifically put to our lawyers in that, in that specific of a manner. So I would still like to vote on, on the resolution, but... So I would still like to vote on the resolution, but I don't see a harm.
Okay, so let's just keep discussing it.
I'm happy to vote as well. I just want the public to understand that once that mandate is lifted, it's not that we're choosing the majority or the minority or the loud ones or the quiet ones. Once the mandate is lifted, it is parent choice. That's it.
All right. Steve?
So, yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to piggyback on that a little bit because, Jonah, I think maybe you misspoke a little bit and you said that, that the administration can lift a mandate, right? But there's no mandate for our administration to lift, right? So my thought on this particular resolution is that it doesn't actually really do anything to help that because once the state lifts the mandate, that we have no policy, we have nothing that says you have to wear masks, right? It's, that, well, I mean, I'd have to look at that, but that's not a, an effective policy, right? So he said, "What about the reopening plan?", which, to my knowledge, is not a policy and is not in effect and is not enforceable as a policy, right? So otherwise, we would have had to enforce masks today, right? So, so I think my concern with approving something like this is that even though it technically appears to be the status quo, if we were to do nothing, this would sort of happen anyway, my concern is that we don't know what the state will do when this expires, right? Will they replace it with something else? Will the county give us a mandate under some sort of legal authority or the federal government? We just, we don't know what the situation will be. And so I don't necessarily today want to make a decision that says, "This is how we are going to act on a, at some point in the future," without knowing what requirements we have. And the other question I would have would also be to talk to, as you said, talk to the school attorneys to find out, are there other ordinances or laws or anything that would, this would violate, right? If we were to do this? Are there, I don't know the answer. I'm hoping the answer is no, based on today. But I think today shows, what happened today kind of shows that we don't have our own policy mandating masks, right? So to be honest, I just don't think this is necessary and it puts us in a potential bind in the future if there are, there's something to replace this, right? So I don't really want to vote on something that is meaningless but could have some risk, right? Or at least I don't want to approve something, I should say.
But can I just say that it would be good for us to have that discussion so that we're all on the same page, that the day the mask mandate lifts, that's it, right? Like, we're not, we're not doing it, you know? That's it. Then it's parent choice. And I think then we should be ready for that and there should be discussions in school so that every child knows that they can take off the mask, that they won't get in trouble for it, and that everyone should respect each other, right? And I think those will have to be conversations that we're going to have to have in school.
So I have a slightly different concern about the resolution and I'll tell you what it is. I have two concerns, really. One is, the bigger issue here is if we're going to have a resolution to imply or to state that we are going to immediately remove, we already have premise that as soon as the mandate is gone, we're going to remove the masks, right? We saw that today. To create a resolution that directs the administration to do that opens up the possibility that if the temperature changes for some reason and the board changes or whatever and there is, you know, a demand to direct, to not allow, to enforce masks even after there's no mandate. I don't want that to be, I don't want that to be our responsibility, frankly. All the people who came up, I mean, there's already confusion in the public, of people who came up and said, "We need to do the research to understand, you know, whether masks work or not, whether the disease is worth the risk, whether the mask is worth the risk, whether mask problems that cause anxiety are more important than mask problems than not wearing a mask causing anxiety." I don't think there's a person on this board, I don't think there's a person in this room that won't admit that the whole mask situation is tragic and terrible. It doesn't matter what side you're on. I don't want to be the guy that has a board that A, has to pick one of the sides because we're here to represent the people. And when the people want something, that's fine. But when a contingent, whether it's left or right, whether it's the vocal minority or the local majority or whatever it is, this is a conflicted, even among the board, there are varying opinions about this problem. And if we put this resolution out there, it basically says that we are directing the administration to do something that A, may not represent, you know, everyone's opinions and B, opens up the possibility that now we do have to hear these comments and say, "Oh, my God, we have to make this decision because we took ownership of it." I don't, we shouldn't own this decision. It's not our decision. When the mandate's here, we are forced to follow it. That is the law. We are obliged to follow the law. When the mandate goes away, whether it's because it expired, whether it's because it was, you know, Supreme Court decided it's unconstitutional, that was what drove it. 7:30 this morning, people complained that it came out at 7:30 this morning. Other districts that did not respond that quickly, if you watch the news today, had parents demanding that their constitutional rights were being violated, threatening lawsuits, okay? We don't, we're not going to be there. And that's, and that's just a fact. We're going to follow the law. That is what every single one of us is obliged to do. Putting this in a resolution opens up a can of worms that we cannot close and I think it is just a bad idea. I applaud the notion that we should be talking about, making sure that when this starts to happen, that people are not going to be surprised, that people are going to hear because while people this morning were surprised at 7:30, we were in a meeting last night and, you know, we had emails coming like the instant this was happening. We had emails coming that we didn't see, that we later saw, you know, that had come the instant this happened. People were tuned into this and were demanding that, you know, we have no masks and were telling us that they were not going to come, you know, send their kids to school with masks. This, imagine what would have happened for the people who said, you know, "How dare we send an email at 7:30 in the morning?" Imagine what would have happened if there was no email at 7:30 in the morning and kids came to school with no masks and other kids who were already afraid had no communication. You'd be yelling and screaming, "How dare this happen?" It would be a travesty, the bullying that was going on. And by the way, I've heard bullying on both sides. It's wrong whichever way you go. I've heard people bullying for people, kids who were wearing masks to take them off and kids who were not wearing the masks to put them on. It's a problem. It's the, it's the core problem here. We are a community and we need to get together and stop bullying each other for the opinion whichever way that is. Imagine what would have happened if the whole community was surprised except for the small group that was, that was here. So again, I think we need to maintain a conversation in the form of understanding the goal and I think we all agree on the goal, right? Is to be able to follow that mandate when it's done and not have the mask and get rid of the mask and get back to normal. But I think putting a resolution out there is just a, it opens up a whole different can of worms on here. So that's my three minutes.
Okay, Steve, and then we'll go to the side.
The one other thing I wanted to mention is that what I would like, right? We had a lot of surprise yesterday. What I would like is that we know there's a possibility that on Friday afternoon, the appellate court might make a ruling and this mandate might disappear. What I would like is for our administration, and I'm sure you will do this, what I would like is for a plan to be developed for what happens if we still have a mandate, but what happens if the mandate disappears? Whether that is Friday afternoon or a month from now or six months from now, what is the, you know, do we have a plan and how are we going to move forward?
Okay. This side, we haven't heard. Jackie?
I was just going to say, I think in terms of a plan, it's really just, it's the internal communications of, of the administration, teachers, staff, everyone who is in direct contact with our children, that there is an empathy around and a respect, a mutual common respect for those children who opt to wear a mask, for those teachers who opt to wear a mask and on the other side, those who do not want to wear a mask. And there should be a mutual respect and teachers, principals, everyone needs to have a training on that of, of, of just embracing the change that's going to be coming. That's what my thought is.
Okay, Jackie?
So I actually agree with everything that you're saying, Christie. And Judah, I do agree pretty much with everything that you're saying. I just feel a little more strongly that it would be a positive for us to take a stand on this at this point. I think it would show the community what we're working toward. It would show them, it would have everyone kind of have a chance to mentally prepare as well, for people to have those conversations with their children, whichever, whichever, you know, side they're on. I think it would be important to start the conversations as well toward children not shaming each other, not telling each other how to, you know, keep their family members safe or that, you know, teasing someone if they are wearing a mask. We know that for the past two years, children really had been bearing the burden of this pandemic and this is a very different virus than it was two years ago. And in the spirit of the DEI work that we are doing, we need to have an inclusive environment that doesn't just include ethnic backgrounds, race and sexuality, but vaccination status and masks as well. And I do feel that at some point, we all have an ethical and moral integrity to do what's right by the children.
Okay.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I just don't think it should be a resolution that implies that we are directing administration to do something. I think it needs to do, you know, to make a decision on lifting, lifting or enforcing a mandate that doesn't exist anymore. I think a conversation, communication with the staff, communication with the community, that is absolutely something we should be doing and training, absolutely. All the things you touched on are spot on, but I just...
As a caveat, right, money, the waters, so it could be a chance, right? So let's say, you know, let's just, the expiration date on, on this mask mandate is slated for February 22nd. There could be another, there could be flexibility at the local level, right? Where local level leaders, Westchester County, district, towns, whatever, could have the authority to still adopt a mask mandate. Is that a possibility? And I think the resolution could help with that, with not having that occur.
Yeah.
If the county, if the county health department mandates masks in the county, we don't have the legal authority to overrule that, right?
And any resolution we pass isn't going to...
Even if the state, if the state says the mask mandate is lifted, the state doesn't own right, the county?
Yeah, but any resolution that we pass is not going to hold any water with the authorities that really hold the power in this situation. This is, I was going to let you go next, but I started on a roll here. This is a power struggle. I mean, let's call it what it is, okay? There are people in the government who are on one side of this issue and there are people that are on the other side of the issue. Now, we as board members, the superintendent, all taken oath to uphold the Constitution, the United States and the State of New York, all the rules and regulations that apply with those things. And as of 6 o'clock this morning, we would have been in violation, okay, of those rules had we not put out an issue giving parents choice, okay? And people, you have to understand that. It's not us, okay? We have an oath to uphold the laws of the state and the federal government. And all of those laws rolling all the way down through the county and the health department and everything else. This is not our decision or our issue.
I get that.
Okay? Right. And we all get that. And what I'm trying to say is, what was done today was an attempt to stay current with the law at the time.
Correct.
And court decisions, and you got to remember this, I don't know how many judges were in that court, but it might have only been one, okay? One person caused all this tumult in the whole state, okay? So...
My name's Hope.
Please, we, this is our discussion. You had your chance to comment, okay? So I'm going to now defer to Cheryl because then we're going to talk about the resolution. Go ahead. Do you have anything to say or you want me to keep rolling?
Well, you could keep rolling. I mean, I think that, yeah, I think we certainly agree on the basic, we all care deeply about the health and welfare of children. We think about it from our different perspectives and experiences and we've always said we want children in school full-time. And I want to take a moment to say that despite the spike that we saw with the number of cases rising and teachers and staff and students and other family members who were sick and unable to work, you know, huge kudos to the administrators who somehow managed to keep our classroom staffed, our children safe in their, in the buildings and did not have to in any way close a building. And I think that, you know, they're on the ground responding to this every day and I think that this late-stage announcement this morning at 7:30 was hard and confusing for a lot of people. My son was already, was already gone. So I hadn't even, he was off on the bus and in school, I think, by the time the email went out. But I, I'm sure it was incredibly challenging for the building principals, the staff, the teachers who were interacting with children, who were getting calls from parents wanting to check and make sure they should be wearing a mask and not sure, should I check with this? You know, huge, you know, shout out. I think it's, it was probably caused a lot of chaos and confusion for the staff as well and they're just on the ground, I think, with best intentions, really trying to do the best. And we can't also control the decisions that Bocey's made. So I understand there was a conflict because Bocey's did have, did maintain the mask mandate today. So our children who went, or students who went from the high school to Bocey's had to abide by those rules. You know, I think we have to be, we've learned in two years and in the last 20 hours that we have to be ready to pivot on a dime. Hochul, you know, the governor is saying that she would continue extending the mask mandate, that she wants a mask, she won't end it a day before, you know, she can do it safely. She's saying if it, depending on how it goes in the court, she might work with the legislature. We just don't know where it's going. We have to adhere to the law. We had an advocacy letter that said that we were requesting metrics for when we could go maskless and now we have this resolution, which in some ways feels like it's in conflict with it. You know, I just don't, I don't think that this resolution makes sense at this time. I think we are waiting, I agree 100% with what Chrissy said, that we, we let's prepare as much as we can. Hopefully, we'll have some, some foreknowledge that we will be going back to school without masks and we can all talk to our children and prepare them for that and that we can have shared respect, absolutely, on both sides. There should not be feelings of intimidation or fear in any, they should be addressed if they're happening in schools and they should not be in any way promoted by our schools.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll just, go ahead.
Can I just say that if we're not going to do a resolution, then I really would like to have it in writing, like a plan in writing that goes out to the staff and the community and the parents so that everybody knows that the day that the mask mandate ends, this is the plan, so that there's no confusion about it, that masks are optional. And I think it should, there should be directions or, you know, to, to the building so that everyone knows and everyone understands and there's no teachers asking students to put on masks or calling home or checking, is it okay if they're not wearing a mask? And, and I think that there should be no like requests that my child doesn't sit next to a student who's unmasked, you know, and discrimination. So I would like to have that plan in writing. Is that something that we can do?
That, certainly, yeah. Sure. I mean, you know, I'm seeing two different things. I mean, one is to try to avoid all the, all the confusion, right? Because they've been living in one world. It's like, it's like a decompression, you know? You're living in a certain environment, all of a sudden, you're in a different environment and it's, you have to prepare for that to go smoothly. So I absolutely agree with that. In terms, that's one side of it. The other side of it is, I'm hearing you kind of want to signal, right, that if and when this happens to the, to the public, that yes, you would, that we have a plan to do it. And yeah, those two things I think would be best kind of separated, like, you know, but one is more for public consumption and one's more for internal consumption. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I'd just like to add that regarding the resolution, while it's, I think this made sense to do to try to get all the boards involved before a few days ago. I think at this point, I really don't think we need this because I think it's outdated already. I think we're very clear as a district, as a governance team in the district, that once there is no mandate, that we are going to go to choice. And I think... And I think, you know, I think they can develop a plan to do that, but I think I would strongly advocate that that plan has to include, that there has to be discipline for mask shaming, okay, in either direction, okay? That it should be treated like bullying, that it's a serious offense, okay? That, and I, I'm saying my piece here, guys. I ask the parents, okay, not to tell your children, don't play with a kid who does or does not wear a mask. That's wrong, okay? That's absolutely wrong. And please, you know, I'm not saying this for applause. I just feel this way and I think we all feel this way. Every kid's got a right to come to school and feel safe, okay, and feel wanted. And that's contra to everything we're trying to do in our strategic plan and everything that's going to come out of our DEI committee, okay? We have to, all our kids got to be treated the same. You know, if a kid chooses to wear a mask or not wear a mask, that's no different than being in a wheelchair or walking with a crutch, okay? It's no different. And nobody should be made to feel unwanted or unsafe regardless. And people who do that need to be disciplined. That's my opinion, okay? So in that regard, I would say that I really don't believe that we need the resolution. I think we're all rowing in the same direction here. I think the administration has clear direction as to where we're going with this. And I would just throw one caveat, that, you know, if the ruling comes down at 4 o'clock in the morning, that, you know, we don't have to enforce it 7:00 in the morning, let's enforce it the day after, okay? Or whatever it takes. And let's just communicate, as someone said here, how we're doing it and when we're doing it. The thing this morning was because we thought we were in violation of the law, okay? When the mandate goes away, then it becomes choice. We don't have to implement the choice, you know, three hours after we get the decision. It might be 27 hours after we get the decision. So let's just do it smart, communicate it, have a plan, okay? And, you know, take it from there. So that's my two cents.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify that? We don't make the plan until?
No, no, I don't think we need a written plan. I think, I think the superintendent works for the board. The superintendent, I believe, has been given clear enough direction from the board after this discussion that when the mandate goes away, it's going away.
But I think it would be helpful to have that written communication out to the parents ahead of time so that they know, so that we don't have another 7 o'clock issue.
I just, I just said, we're not going to do another 7 o'clock in the morning issue.
Right, but I don't want to wait till the next day either because then parents are going to be confused. Like I want it to be ahead of time.
It's pre-planning.
Pre-planning.
When and after the time comes.
Yes.
What the expectations are.
Yes.
This is what students.
So that their parents aren't like, I didn't get the email.
Here's a, I'll offer this as an alternative. Let's ask, we have a board meeting on February 2nd, I think is our next, first? Okay. Let's continue this discussion on February 1st, see where we are. Superintendent's report, he could come back to us with his plan on what's going to happen if the mandate expires and how we're going to move forward.
The mandate might end February 1st, that's what I'm saying. I really think we should be.
Yeah, but we're meeting the 1st.
But it could end on Friday.
But if it ends.
Oh, if it ends on Friday? Oh, yeah, yeah. If it ends on Friday, it would be no different than this morning, but, you know.
But this morning was a disaster, that's what I'm trying to say.
No, but if it ends on Friday, no one's coming to school until Monday, right? You're not going to get a notification on Monday morning about it. You're going to get a notification on Friday or over the weekend that says, you know.
You know, we don't run the district, he runs the district.
No, I understand that, but I'm trying to.
He knows what he's got to do.
I think we just don't want any ambiguity.
Of course. I think we've been very clear. I think we've been very, does anybody think we haven't been clear?
I just think we want to avoid what happens to that.
Absolutely.
So just want to be ready.
Tell the judge who issued the order at 4 o'clock in the morning or whatever the hell time it was.
6 o'clock.
Whatever. Whatever. It needs to be communicated down through the administration.
I'll make a slightly different suggestion because I think what I'm hearing, if I'm hearing correctly, is what you're concerned is, is not so much even about the communication in the morning that happened, but some of the repercussions, right? Some of the expectations for how to balance, like when I hear a story, and I'm not trying to defend anyone, but I'm just telling you how I see it. When I hear a story about a teacher or administrator who asked a child, who questioned a child, did you choose not to wear your mask today? And I also hear stories about kids who were essentially encouraged not to wear their mask. My thought is, they weren't trying to encourage the kid to put the mask back on, they were trying to make sure the kid wasn't bullied to take it off. And I think that's not necessarily an irresponsible thing or an inappropriate thing.
Yeah.
I'm exploring a possibility. It may be wrong. The point is, this is not something any of our teachers or administrators have been trained to handle. And I think we need to make sure that at least the expectation is, until we either know how to handle that better or know an appropriate way to make sure that there's not bullying going on, that we communicate to the staff, here's how we're going to handle this. And we communicate to the parents, here's how we're going to handle this. And I'll be honest with you, if the way we decide to handle this, or the administration decides to handle this, is not acceptable to every parent, well, guess what? That's not new.
I'm just going to add that.
You know, we're going to do the best we can and parents are going to have to accept the fact that sometimes we're going to get it spot on and sometimes we're not.
No, no, I know, but I think there were isolated issues today at the secondary school where teachers were not happy with what was transpiring. So, you know.
I mean, again, I heard stories from schools. I heard, and it varied. And that's, and that's for the administration to deal with. I think the expectation needs to be set.
They have to deal with it.
Yeah, I mean.
Please.
If, if they, how could we have expected anything else? How could we have expected anything else? We all got thrown a curveball. When I got home last night from a board meeting at 10:30 and looked on my phone to see what had transpired and acted to move on that information, understand what had happened, determine if the district needed to make a response, formulated the response, that caused email to go out that night at 11:30, 7:45, whatever it was, right? And then another email to go out at 7:00, whenever it hit homes. I didn't enjoy that and you know that, right? You all know that because you were in the meeting with me, right? So you were surprised along with me. I'm giving that for benefit of people who just want to understand a little bit of the context. But that was difficult. So how could we have expected anything different? We've now been, we've been operating under a certain set of rules that we've become accustomed to. Masks, we know how to do that. Now all of a sudden you're saying masks are, let me give you one example. Masks are optional, right? I didn't say masks were optional. It was very intentional in that language because the night before, based on the information I had, I said, we're going to, we're going to continue to wear the mask, we're going to follow the SED's recommendation. It was a pretty big pivot to go from that at 11 to something at night to at 7:00 AM, masks are optional, right? What made sense was to say, we've been living in a masked world, let's create language and an expectation that it's probably a good idea to keep wearing your mask if you're comfortable doing that. We think that's probably a good idea because we don't know if this is going to change a few more times today. And if you don't want to wear the mask, you're free not to wear the mask. That's the language we use, right? Now, that's not as clear as saying, we've shifted now and mask optional and here's all the rules around mask optional and here's what it means. And that's the plan you're talking about, right? I get that. But, you know, we can create conditions to make that successful. We can plan for that and I want you to be reassured about that. But what happened today was just pure, pure response to circumstance and we put people in a position where they really didn't know what, and I put out emails internally, not just the ones that went home, but I gave suggested language to people. I gave emails to people and said, this is the expectation, just to be clear. And we reinforced those a couple of times. But can you imagine, like the teachers and the principals and everybody's getting this stuff at 7:00 AM and I'm briefing the principals on how to handle it? Kids are starting to, guess what? High school kids are coming in, right? Elementary kids are coming in and they've had zero time to prepare, right? And they're probably worried about, well, what if somebody gets sick or what if, you know, what if I? They're making their best judgment at that moment as to what they, they've interpreted what they're supposed to do. And of course, we set that up to fail. We set that up to fail, let's be honest about it. We didn't do it on purpose, but we got what we planned for because we didn't, we didn't plan that, on nobody's radar, at least I'll speak for myself, that we were going to be in a situation where we were going to not be dealing with masks the next day, right? So I absolutely embrace and wholeheartedly support this idea that the more prepared we can be internally and externally, we will definitely do that. I just wanted to say what I said because, you know, apart from direction and training and all of that, we put people in a position to do the best they could and they did. And not everyone knows the context of the stories you may have heard or what you may have been told happened because you're getting a child's perspective or a teacher's perspective or, you know, whoever you were talking to. And even if we understood the perspectives completely accurately, people are going to be very variable, they're going to be variable in their responses. They're going to, they're going to do the best they can. And that's all that, you know, I think we have to just understand that people have their own fears and their own concerns and they're trying to do the right thing and they're not, if they're not sure, they might default to something more conservative than we think they should or they might default to something more, eh, go ahead and do whatever, you know, than we think they should. And you just have to, just have to think, we put people in that position, the circumstances put people in that position. When I say we, I don't mean you, I mean my directive, based on the information, put people in that situation. But I, there was no other, there's nothing else we could do. So we did the best we could with what we, with what we were dealing with. So yes, we'll put a plan together, absolutely understand that, put it in writing for you. I don't know what form it'll be in by the 1st, but, you know, we know that Friday is coming and we don't know what's, you know, what's going to happen between, you know, at that point. And we'll have to be ready to create the most stable and prepared position we can put ourselves in and our kids in for, for, you know, Monday and beyond.
Okay. I think we've done this, so, yeah, I'm going to go back to you, Jonah, do you still?
You, I know before you said maybe it would be a better idea if we kind of waited till like the next day on something. I mean, I think if that was today and we had that option, you know, maybe that could have avoided some conflicts, but I would like the plan to be such that we can, you know, as soon as we can, not waiting till the next day. If this comes at 8 o'clock on Friday, you know, even if the kids are already at school, make an announcement. I mean, you can, we now know that this could come at any second, so we can start preparing and even if it's in the middle of the day, go on the intercom, tell them, mask optional.
Yeah, and I want to support the idea that we have to be able to move quickly because information travels so fast, right? So people are finding things, so yes, the expectation for people is that that occur and so we have to be prepared. Otherwise, we have really, we get really frustrated, you know, individuals, right? Who feel like, hey, this came down, you know, let's go. And that's the world we live in. Yep, I agree.
Okay, so do you still want to make this motion or are we all comfortable with where we are?
Well, I don't think it's going to pass, so no.
Okay. All right, so we've got some direction, we're going to close this piece of the meeting. And that's it. We'll know where we're coming from.
That exact.
All right, so next item is.
Do we need board comments? I think we just.
Yeah, we're going to do comments from the board event. So it's, anybody have comments? Anybody have any comments?
I wanted to make one brief comment. I know we're all tired, but I have to give a shout out to the Middle School Players Club. They did a fantastic job and seriously, Ms. Rendy and Ms. Bonner had, I know they had a really tough time with kids who were out with COVID, kids who were quarantined. They had to get high schoolers to come in and replace some of the kids. I mean, and they, they kept with it and I have to really give them kudos because after the show, the show was fantastic, the joy in the hallway from those kids was, was just amazing and their families. And this is the stuff that matters. This is the stuff that kids remember when they look back on their school years. They remember, I don't think they remember algebra class, like they, you know, they remember like the fun stuff, the events and the plays and it was fantastic. So I have to just really give a shout out to them. That's it.
Okay, good. Anybody else have anything? There being none, all right. New agenda items, I don't think there are any there. Okay, so we come up to adjournment, so.
Do you want to announce the future meeting dates?
Future meeting dates, yeah, we could, we could announce them. The next meeting is February 1st, which is a work session, and February 15th, which is our regular meeting for February.
And also the bond vote.
And also the day of the bond vote. So please go out and vote, everybody. Make your voice heard. And then the meeting after that will be March 8th. And I'm not going beyond that for now. So can I entertain a motion to go into exec, exec?
I'll move to vote exec. For personnel matter.
Yeah, second?
I will second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, good. Thank you very much. And good evening, everyone.